Clerk, you read a roll call, please.
Yes. The six o'clock special meeting has begun. Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchesi.
Here.
Counselor Matusky. Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli. And President Delasola.
Here.
Nine members present. We do have a quorum. Mr. President.
Please stand salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, you read a piece on the agenda for the six o'clock meeting.
For the six o'clock special meeting, the only item on the agenda, item number one is that Mr. President, is a communication offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr., as President, that Encore Boston Harbor is here to present to the City Council and the public their transportation management plan.
Counselor Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could please have the folks here from Boston Harbor to come and explain to us what's going on with the traffic.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it.
Ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, councilors, thank you for inviting us up here today. And thank you to the Everett Police Department for participating as well. I want to take a minute to recognize the Everett High School band. Seemingly on Facebook, I saw a lot of wonderful photos. And it's really an honor to see those kids down in Washington, DC honoring all those who gave their lives to serve this great nation and participating in the Memorial Day Parade. So that's so wonderful to see. And so we're so lucky to be in a community that really supports our veterans and our troops. It's something that we really pride ourselves on. We're committed to hiring veterans and procuring veteran, you know, promoting veteran opportunities to local businesses. It's something that has been very meaningful for us and we've been very successful with to date. So with that, I note the topic for tonight's meeting is transportation. Thank you for your patience. I want to take a moment and recognize Mr. Jim Folk. He's our Executive Director of Transportation for Encore Boston Harbor. He comes from a long history of transportation-related fields and industries here in Massachusetts. He worked for many years with the MBTA and most recently as the Head of Transportation for the Convention Center down in South Boston. So he's very familiar with large activities and large citywide and regional-wide events. And so he's been instrumental in drafting and putting together the committee and putting this plan in place. So please let me take you through the plan for a minute and then we'll invite up Mr. Folk and the Everett Police Department are available for any questions. We'll give some opening remarks, a grand opening overview of what to expect on June 23rd. That's only 26 days away, so it's coming quickly. You know, it's a pleasure for me personally to be a part of such a wonderful opportunity for so many thousands of people because seven years ago, when we started working on this project together, this seemed like so far away and in the distant future. And to see it happening there today, to see over 1,600 people already working in our property, on our site, coming to work, being hired from the host and surrounding communities, it's just been an amazing experience. And this is what we set out to do seven years ago and we're extremely excited that it's happening today. We'll talk about transportation to and from the resort. We'll talk about some parking. And we'll talk about, really and most importantly, our grand opening transportation demand management, including signage, police traffic control, marketing communications, and some stakeholder action items. Our grand opening is contrary to any rumors. Our grand opening will be on June 23rd, 2019. That has not changed. We're very excited. We're working earnestly to make that happen. Our operations team is working around the clock, seven days a week, including over this past weekend, making sure everything's put together. The last flower will be in place, the last cup will be set, and the last restaurant. It's a true testament to our team and the teamwork of every individual to get this monumental task up and running. You're very familiar with this already. This is an overview of our site plan. One area to pay attention to is the bike and pedestrian connection that goes under the MBTA tracks and over to the Costco site. That's very important in our pre-opening plans and it's essential to keeping people off of Broadway and out of congested streets and out of congested neighborhoods. Transportation options. So when Jim came onboard, he worked to fulfill all of our transportation commitments. What you see here are the exact buses. And I know during our last tour, you all had the opportunity as a council to ride the Neighborhood Shuttle. I think, I don't want to speak on your behalf, but many of the comments that I heard were you were impressed. Impressed by the quality of the vehicle. Again, this Neighborhood Shuttle is free to anyone in the community to use to visit our establishment or to go to the Silverline or to go to the new River Green Park that we're building in partnership with the city where the community hopes and the mayor hopes to put the new football stadium in the future. So it's a wonderful amenity. It's a high-quality vehicle. It goes from the Chelsea Silverline by this building at Everett City Hall over to the resort and over to River Green. Our boats. Our boats have been sea-trial. We have, we will have at least three in operation by opening day. Our commitment was for three, but we've actually added a fourth boat through our operations agreement. And so we'll have four boats once the last one's completed that will enter service. Jim is also, and we'll get to this in a little bit, Jim's also worked with some other local operators to ensure that there could be increased service over this summer season, this peak demand season during the pre-opening phase. Our Encore Premium Shuttle, coach service, and we'll talk about all these in greater detail, but this is a high-quality bus to take folks from across the region to our facility with, by getting out of cars. Our objective is to keep you out of your vehicle. We want to keep as many people out of their vehicles, getting to and from our resort safely without affecting traffic or transportation congestion in the neighborhood. The MBTA is critical. It's critical for our success. The subway and the T in particular and the T buses are all critical to ensuring that the success of this operation is in plan. You'll see that again in the future. Our Encore Shuttle, which will run from Malden and Wellington stations as well. Yep. That's it? We covered it all? Good. You got it. Again, we touched on these a little bit. What we didn't touch on is the pedestrian and bicycle accommodations and as well the rideshare services and taxi services that will be servicing our patrons and our property. And we'll get to that in a little bit in the future. Our premium coach. So our company, Encore Boston Harbor, has engaged in a partnership with a local bus company. We procured all-new luxury motor coaches. These are 50-passenger motor coaches, ADA accessible. They will start operating 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And depending on the success of the operation, could certainly flex up. And that's our hope, is that this becomes extremely successful and we're able to extend the service. This is a very exciting introductory fare of $7. So for example, in Londonderry or the Rockland, Massachusetts Park and Ride or the Milbury Park and Ride, you could go as a guest, and it doesn't matter if you're in-state, out-of-state, park your vehicle for free or get dropped off for free and ride for $7 to and then from our resort in a safe, comfortable, and luxurious vehicle. It will have Wi-Fi service onboard. We have bathrooms onboard. And really, we, and Jim's goal is that the luxury and our five-star service levels and amenities are extended to our guests as soon as they enter our vehicles. Encore Shuttle Transit Access. This is the bus that will be servicing our patrons and employees from the Malden MBTA station and also the Wellington station. Again, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, continuous service every 20 minutes. As you can imagine, this we think is going to be a tremendous opportunity. In addition to these, we made significant enhancements to the Malden and actually into the Wellington MBTA stations. We have our own bus bays that'll be able to pick up passengers and employees. If you can get to Malden or Wellington Center, which you can by a number of different options, you can imagine the commuter rail lines coming from the North Shore, the Woburn-Havre Line that ends at Malden Center, also anyone that's traveling on the Orange Line and all those North Shore bus routes that terminate at Malden Station. You can take any of those means of transportation. You can get on our shuttle and get right to the resort without stepping into your car. As an added incentive, we will be heavily subsidizing employee MBTA passes as to encourage those. And we will provide no employee parking onsite on property. And this is really to encourage folks to get out of their vehicle, incentivize them to use public transportation, and perhaps even as a family decide that one car may be enough for a family by allowing folks to get to and from work by another means. Again, that fare is free. Same with the Wellington MBTA station, same buses, 24 hours a day. We would, anyone coming up from the south that would be traveling along the Orange Line, we would be working with the MBTA to keep people on the line so that they can use our dedicated express shuttle that would go from Wellington along Route 16 and over into the resort. This is also free, free to patrons and free to our employees. Grand opening only. We will be running shuttle service from Wonderland MBTA Station. An integral part of this plan, remember, our peak times are nights and weekends, especially during the pre-opening phase and the opening phase. That means that we want to take advantage of all the MBTA stations possible. Our busiest times, all these stations are empty. The Wellington Station garage is empty. The Wonderland Station garage is empty. Any of those large commuter lots, they're empty. So we're going to be pushing and promoting the opportunity to, A, park for cheap, get on the T, no different than if you were going to a Red Sox game or a Celtics game or a Bruins game, any other event. We encourage you to think differently. Don't pay, you know, don't pay a heavy parking fee. Take the time, do the research, get down a different, buy a different means, and take advantage of all these opportunities. The Encore Neighborhood Runner, we spoke about this a little bit. This is the 26-passenger motor coach that will run from Chelsea, the Silverline stop near the Market Basket, Everett City Hall, and the River Green Parking Lot. Again, this is free. This is not just free to our employees and to our guests, but it's free to anybody in the community to ride to any of the destinations. And this is something that was very important to the mayor, is very important to Mr. Monty from the Everett Transportation Department to accommodate something that we're very proud of and we think it will be very heavily utilized. This is the route, as you can see in greater detail. As you can see, the part to the far right is the Silverline Station area, downtown Everett, which, by the way, I just want to highlight this, this is extremely important for the Everett business community, for that downtown business district. And I know that the mayor and the city and you all are doing a lot of work to revitalize the downtown. We will have thousands, millions of customers that can jump on this line and head right up to downtown Everett for free. And we will have 5,500 employees, and I think this is even more importantly, we'll have 5,500 employees with a healthy paycheck in their pocket looking to get together after work. I see it already. We go on the shuttles and the opportunity for Everett businesses to promote, after you get out of work, when you finish your shift, jump on the shuttle, visit some of these downtown establishments. Jump, get for free, you don't have to worry about parking, then the shuttle will take you back to your car or however you got back in the final destination. I think this is a tremendous asset, not just for employee and patron transportation, but for the downtown businesses in Everett to really take advantage of it. The other option is the new area where the fermentation district near the breweries, that's one of the other stops. I think these are two big booms, boons for the local business community that can really be accessible to our employees. Anybody that's listening that would like to learn more about how to promote your business through that, we'll be sharing some information through the mayor's office, through the council, but go to EBHwesave.com. And that's Encore, it stands for Encore Boston Harbor, when employees save.com. And what that is, is a free marketing tool. It was born out of a high demand in Las Vegas because we were receiving so many calls through our Human Resource Department many years ago saying, hey, we know you have 12,000 employees. We'd love to let them know about our new restaurant, our car wash, our shoe place, our shoe replayer place, whatever it may be. We'd love to let them know about it. Is there some way we could offer an incentive, an opportunity? We fielded so many of those phone calls, we created an Intranet tool. And I believe we talked about this during the campaign many years ago, but now it's finally become real. So it's an opportunity for any of the local businesses to sign up, talk about what they have to offer, put up their menus or car wash deal or whatever. We charge nothing. We ask for nothing other than create an incentive that's appealing to our employees to encourage them to try something new and come on down. So that's EBHwesave.com. Encore Employee Shuttle, again, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, every 15 minutes from Wellington Station and Malden Station. The Premium Harbor Shuttle, 37-passenger luxury motor yachts. They're amazing. I think this will be a tremendous asset to the community and more importantly, our introductory fare is extremely cheap, $7 to get from, and you can't do this in an Uber X. You can't get from our resort to the seaport for $7 without a headache on top of it. So to be able to jump on a boat, a luxury yacht, and go over to the convention area and the seaport area, downtown Faneuil Hall area, avoid all the traffic, all the congestion, all the delays, this is a tremendous benefit. I know I'll personally be taking it a lot. I think this will be very successful. We're going to start it at 7:00 a.m., so I also think it's going to be a tremendous opportunity, not even for us, but for the region. Because again, our peak time's not 7:00 in the morning, but folks trying to get from North Station over to the seaport where there are not great connections right now, could walk over from the, from North Station Garage, jump on the boat for $7 and get to work over in the seaport. Jim's very familiar with that from running the Convention Center and setting up a Transportation Management Association. The need for that connection is huge. So we think that that is also an added demand on the shuttle that can help offset, these are some heavily subsidized operations that could help us pay for some of these shuttles. And to the extent that they are successful and financially feasible, we would love to expand service. That's no secret. It's just figuring out how to make the numbers work. We're going to make it really easy. You can pay onboard. It's credit or debit only, no cash will be accepted. And again, all of our other transportation options, other than the premium shuttles from North Shore, South Shore, and Western Mass, there's no fee to ride at all. So you'd be able to jump onboard unlike an MBTA bus where you're waiting for collections. You can jump onboard any of our transit shuttles. The driver can close the doors. Everyone can safely take their seats and we can get rolling. We don't have to worry about fare collection. We don't have to worry about sitting on the side of the roads. We can just keep these moving continuously, try to keep people out of their cars. This is our Encore Harbor Shuttle route. This is the water transportation route from our resort down to the Marriott Long Wharf area and the World Trade Center area and the seaport. Again, I think they're great connections and great destinations for us to hit. In addition, and you'll see in the later slide, it also allows the reverse commute. So if you're attending a convention, come up and see us. If you want to drive and you don't want to drive through the city, great. Go park in one of the garages. Massport has a bunch of garages down in the seaport area. Park there, jump on the boat, head to the resort, avoid all the traffic and congestion going through the city. Or better yet, get off further down the line, jump on to the Orange Line, go to South Station, walk over to the boat and keep going. Maritime, and I know this is very important for you all, we take this very seriously, including the raising and lowering of the Alfred Street Bridge, but our maritime traffic pattern, law enforcement operational plan, and let me just back up for a second. Mr. Folk started putting together this team, and we'll have a slide on this further, but I think it's important to reiterate it now, in February. So he started a stakeholder group in February that included every public safety organization within our host and surrounding communities, Massport, the U.S. Coast Guard, Boston Marine Units, Everett Marine Units, the MassDOT Highway Division, as well as many others, and there's another list. But this hasn't been baked overnight. This is something that was carefully crafted, this plan was carefully crafted with many different stakeholders, with many groups. There were bi-weekly meetings. In addition to the bi-weekly meetings, there were stakeholder meetings and stakeholder homework that happened between each meetings that really put together this plan. One of the important things for maritime traffic is the folks traveling up and down the river today are well-versed in the navigable channels. It's just by local knowledge. We know that people are going to be trying to come up here from across the region that won't have that same local knowledge. So we've worked really hard to making the area safe through navigation buoys. Aids will be lighted in white color telling you to keep right. There are directional navigational markers helping to really set some rules for the area and keeping our boaters and marine pedestrians safe. Law enforcement assets will designate holding areas for larger vessels awaiting an hourly bridge lift. So the bridge is not going to be raised at every opportunity for anyone that has a larger vessel to go up, and we'll get to that in a little bit. But they will be held and they will be told that the next bridge time will be X and they could either wait there, they could turn around, spend some time enjoying the harbor, and then come back for the next bridge opening. But we're going to do our best to communicate all these bridge opening schedules to mariners through a heavy campaign through all the surrounding marinas, not just immediate surrounding, but marinas across New England, Massachusetts, where anyone's thinking of taking larger vessels through the ocean and coming to visit us, where to go, the options on where to dock. Dock in the Boston Harbor, we don't allow overnight docking. We allow drop and goes. Leave your boat down at the seaport area. Leave your boat in any one of the larger marinas that offer transient slips. Jump on our Harbor Shuttle, jump on a water taxi and head over to the resort. Again, that's another means of ensuring that the boats are small enough so that it will limit the need to raise that bridge. Maritime traffic pattern, this is just the visual depiction of the navigational markers that we talked about in the previous slide and sort of the flow of marine traffic. Mystic River. Mr. Folk has been working hard with the local stakeholders to ensure that there's a set schedule and a predictable schedule that we can communicate to all the local stakeholders and marinas outside. So we will be, we will ensure that people are well-aware of when the bridge will open and when the bridge will not, and they can plan their trips accordingly. 7:45 to 9:00 a.m., the bridge will not be allowed to open. 9:10 to 10:00 a.m., the bridge, Jim, help me out with this traffic. 19, 10:00 p.m., they won't be allowed to open either. So there's a 10-minute window between 9:00 and 9:10 p.m. that the bridge will be allowed to open if needed. 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., the bridge will not be allowed to open. From November through March, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., the bridge will not be allowed to open without advance notice. three PM to seven AM, the bridge will not be allowed to open without advance notice. Again, um, all of our vessels are designed to go under the bridge. The vessels that we're looking at supplementing will also be required to be able to go underneath the bridge without raising it. That's, our intention is to ensure that this bridge does not go, does not open, um, for us at all. There will be a minimum of three on-water law enforcement assets from eight AM to twelve PM on opening day and as long as possible and as long as we need after the fact. Massachusetts State Police Patrol Commander, Command and Control, Boston Police Department Harbor Master, Everett Police Department Marine Unit, and two Coast Guard Auxiliary Assets will be on scene as available stationed under the Tobin Bridge for boater education. This is, the intention is to catch folks before they even head upriver and try to get under the bridge. Tell people in advance, either through radios or through visual communication as folks are driving by, um, that this is a well-controlled, um, navigable channel. There's going to be predictable times that the bridge will go up and go down and try to keep some semblance of control in the area. Um, the same asset allocation shall be employed on the following weekend, June twenty-eighth to June thirtieth, uh, and as needed after. Maritime traffic pattern, law enforcement operational plan, as you can see on all the dots, this is where law enforcement, um, will be stationed with marine vehicles. Ride-share services, um, I think this is really important. Um, it's a consideration that has become front of mind in many cities at this point. Ride-share has a tendency, it's, it's provided tremendous service to patrons and a tremendous service, to be frank, to communities that weren't overly served through a taxi service, um, but it's also provided some challenges that need to be overcome. And one of those challenges is while Ubers and Lyft drivers are waiting to be hailed, they tend to drive around the neighborhood, which A, it raises greenhouse gas emissions by keeping cars idling, um, but also adds to congestion on the street and probably most importantly adds congestion to the street and the local neighborhoods. One thing, and I know, thank you all for your support, one of the, the important features that we added was to, um, some of the land we owned across the street, there was a ride-share lot where we will be staging ride-share vehicles. And the only way you can hail an Uber or Lyft in the entire Lower Broadway area is if that Uber and Lyft driver is in the lot. It does that driver no good to drive around the area to wait in one of the neighborhood streets, to wait in Charles Town, um, to wait or drive around any of the neighborhoods. Um, they can only be called to our entire district if they're waiting in that lot. And that includes if they're going for a pickup at McDonald's, Mike's Roast Beef, the Batch Yard, it doesn't matter. Anyone in that area, those Ubers and Lifts need to be sitting in that lot. Um, I, I credit Mr. Folk for working with the operators to geofence, um, this location to achieve what we hope will be a very successful initiative. But this should limit the amount of congestion that's generated from Uber and Lyft drivers just roaming the neighborhood waiting for a fare. Um, the ride-share lot, we just talked about that. Again, that's across the street. Um, it will be staffed by one of our employees twenty-four-seven. Um, we'll have bathrooms available on-site. Um, it'll be well-maintained, it will be well-policed. Um, it, you know, this is something that we think should be a tremendous asset for the region, not just for the resort. Um, one thing, one important thing to note is that our guests, um, and folks in the area will never know the difference. They'll hail their ride-share, they'll have the five-minute wait approximately that they would in any other opportunity. That ride-share will depart our lot, um, drive along Robin Dexter Street and right into the front of the Portico Share, um, to pick up our guests. They're never the wiser. We also have taxi stand, um, right on-site. So, I mean, I know, for example, I think that will be, uh, very successful. When I go to the airport, I typically, I may Uber and Lyft over to the airport from my home in Melrose because we don't have great taxi service there. Um, but I know when I come out of the airport, I like to get my bags, get in the car that's sitting on the curb and get home. Um, so I think that's gonna be a tremendous opportunity for the local taxi company, um, and to pick up our guests and bring them around the region. Uh, we will have a taxi stand, um, right on-site where we'll be whistling them up to the Portico Share for our guests. So those will be the most easily accessible, um, vehicular modes of transportation at the front of the resort. Parking lot spaces, uh, there's been a, a lot of discussion on where folks can park, especially on opening day. Uh, you can imagine, we have twenty-nine-hundred parking spaces on-site. That gets very tough when everybody's coming at the same time. As operations are rolling and people have learned the different modes of transportation, people are spacing their times more appropriately, um, that becomes much more normalized and more manageable. At first, when everyone's trying to show up for a ten AM ribbon cutting, um, and opening ceremony, then it becomes challenging. So, uh, we've been working with the MBTA, uh, and we've also been working with the city and the mayor's office, um, to create additional overflow parking opportunities. There's thirteen-hundred-and-fifty spaces available at Station Landing, um, where our off, development office is. Um, it's a well-lit garage, um, it's a very nice environment. We'll be pushing people there. Thirteen-hundred spaces available at Wellington Station. Um, again, remember, I know many of you are probably thinking right now, Wellington Station, I go there and by eight AM it's full. Well, we're talking about peak times that are on nights and weekends. When you can go by Wellington, how many times have you driven down Route sixteen in the evenings and the parking lots are empty? These are all opportunities. You park there, you pay, instead of paying the rate at our resort, you pay the MBTA rate, which I believe is five dollars, uh, seven dollars, you pay seven dollars and jump on our free shuttle and you go to the front door of the resort. So again, I think there's a, a lot of parking opportunities if you happen to drive. Um, we're gonna do everything in our power to encourage folks to not drive and take other means of transportation. Uh, the, the River Green temporary, River Green Lot has another six-hundred-and-twenty-five spaces and the city-managed lot across the street from the resort, the Lower Broadway area has seven-hundred spaces plus the ride-share lot. Parking traffic demand management, in addition to the spaces we just talked about, um, during the opening period, we'll be running shuttle service from Wonderland Station, which is an additional fourteen-thousand-thirty, uh, sorry, fourteen-hundred-and-thirty-six spaces. We'll provide free service to and from all these stations that we've mentioned. In addition, if you look at the MBTA map, you can get to any of these locations by rail if you want to, or by MBTA bus. And that we will be heavily promoting that, um, through our social media channels, through paid media, through sit-downs that Mr. Folk has been having, um, with news organizations already, all in the lead, lead-up to opening and communicating what are the different options to get to the resort. If you go to Fenway Park during a game day, that's baked in now. People understand what are our options. Um, green line, orange line, walk, whatever, however you choose to get there. But with us, it's a little bit unknown. So our marketing dollars are being spent to inform people of the region on how to get to the property without taking a vehicle. We're gonna be telling folks that there are not enough spaces, don't expect enough spaces, um, here's, here's where to go. Bicycle parking, um, as you know, we've been, uh, tremendous supporters and advocates of the Bike to the Sea, Northern Strand Bike Path, um, from inception. We spent a lot of money and time and consideration on our Harbor Walk, the connection under the, um, under the MBTA Bridge over to the Costco Lot, redoing the bicycle and ped pedestrians, uh, connections over through Sullivan Station and Sullivan Square, repairing those sidewalks. Um, this is a big part of what we wanna do. If, it's gonna be nice, we're gonna be opening in the summer. Take a walk, enjoy yourselves, um, even park in the River Green Walk and Walk, head down the bike path. Um, soon enough, hopefully, um, we've been working collaboratively, um, with the mayor and the city. I know they're working earnestly on formalizing that path and that connection behind the Costco and the Home Depot, um, over to the resort. So you can make a straight shot, um, from the Northern Strand Bike Trail without going through Suites Circle or Centilli Circle. Go underneath all of that, um, come up on the back of the Costco and the, um, DDRC property, travel along the tracks and go underneath and jump right into the Harbor Walk where hopefully, um, and we're excited, we submitted our first environmental documents, um, that what's called an environmental notification form to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to really advance permitting on the pedestrian bridge that goes to Assembly Row and connects hopefully to that Orange Line Station over there. I think that's a tremendous, tremendous connection and would be a tremendous asset to the entire region, allowing folks to come to and from both our site, but also if you're working over partners' employees, five thousand people over there. I think they're well over ten thousand employees at the whole Assembly Row complex with more construction other way, underway. So anyone from the region, Everett, Malden, um, would be able to use the bicycle and pedestrian connections to get right to work, right to the Orange Line without going on any major roads at all. For opening day, our pedestrian plan is to keep everybody off Broadway. So we, we anticipate that there'd be a significant queue and a significant interest of, of folks that are interested in, in watching the opening ceremonies, um, and being first into the property. So we intend to queue those folks up along our Harbor Walk underneath the bridge going over to the Costco property and utilize the DCR connector. Um, in addition to that, and in an effort to keep all vehicles off of Broadway, uh, Mr. Folk has been working with DCR. DCR has approved and we have tested the turning radiuses, um, on running all of our shuttles down the DCR connector, which is right by the, I don't know if, how many of you ever driven along but not ducked in towards Costco, just kept going. You get over to the, um, the dam, so you can get down there, we can make the clearance, we can turn our buses down there and get everything out. So, um, that's an effort for us to shorten the distance that all of our shuttles need to run. It keeps them off of Broadway. Um, the queue, folks can get off the buses, everything's ADA accessible from that point. Um, they can queue up and enjoy the Harbor Walk. It should be, hopefully, a beautiful, nice summer day. Folks can go around the Harbor Walk and enter the resort that way. Grand opening drop-off and pickup, again, this is a zoomed-out detail of what we're talking about. This is keeping folks out of Centilli Circle, Suites Circle and down Broadway, um, and bringing all those vehicles down the DCR connector. Operation Traffic Demand Management, we will have variable message signs all over the place. So we'll be telling people and also through radio stations, we'll be communicating on a live-drive basis on where there's parking available, um, which way to go, and here's the locations of where these signs will be located. This is again, portable, portable variable message location signs. And this is sort of the normal. So this would tell you normal operations if there's availability at the parking garage. The arrows will all go this way, directing you into, um, the lot. What we wanna do is ensure that if and when we're full, that we don't have people aimlessly driving to the resort and congesting Broadway. We wanna make sure that people go to the other lots that are available and stay out of the corridor completely. They'll know to expect to park at Station Landing, they'll know to expect, um, to park at Wonderland and wait for the shuttle, so why even come to our property? We're gonna get these messages out early and often. Um, we'll be changing the live signage as it goes. I think one important thing, um, of note is that the Everett Police Department, in conjunction with all the other regional law enforcement individuals and the state police, will be setting up a mobile command center. Right now, they've been working with the MBTA to position the mobile command unit in the MBTA yards. I don't know if that will be the final destination, but there will be a mobile, a, a unified mobile command station where all the law enforcement organizations can work together in concert so that they can be in regular communication across their own units, um, and with us as well. So it's live information that's fed across all organizations in real time where we're able to make, um, spur-of-the-moment adjustments as needed. Um, this would just be an example of how the arrows would change on all the variable message signage pointing you to overflow parking at Station Landing. How they would change pointing, um, overflow parking to River Green. Details, um, we are not short of assistance for the opening period. And I say opening period because we don't view this as one-day event. We view that this, um, could be, could cause a regional impact for a number of days, an unknown number of days, to be honest. We're gonna prepare for the worst and hope for the best. So we're prepared to keep this operation going in all these slides as long as possible and as long as needed. Um, but we have officers from all the different regional, local, um, police departments, the state police, Boston Department of Public Works, Boston Transportation Department, they're sending signal folks and, and at that point, all the signals through Sullivan Station, uh, through Sullivan Square, through Rutherford Ave and up Broadway will be connected through the underground conduit. They'll all be timed and synced appropriately and be connected back to the, uh, mobile, um, command unit that Boston Transportation uses. US Coast Guard, uh, Mass State Police, Everett PD, and Boston Marine Units as well. I know we covered that before, but it's important to note again. Uh, police details are all over the place. Um, we will have every area covered and the ability to take over manual controls of any of the lights or any of the intersections as needed will have eyes across the region. And I just wanna note that, you know, this is, I think a lot of this is overkill and it's important, um, to, to recognize the commitment that our team, our president Bob DeSalvio, and our companies making and appreciating that we absolutely, um, will have an impact on the region. Don't hold us, um, and I apologize for that. And, and don't think that this first opening period is gonna be the rest of your life. Um, it's happened everywhere. You can Google if you're interested, when IKEA opened in Stoughton and the amount of newspaper articles of people that were just interested in going to see an IKEA. We're the new shiny toy in town. A lot of people are gonna be interested in coming, seeing what we have to offer. Then it will normalize, um, I promise. So, um, a lot of this stuff could go away, but we're doing everything our best, uh, the best as possible, and we're, we're keeping as flexible and nimble as possible so that we can get through this opening period with as little impact as possible. State police details, um, again, this is across the entire Route sixteen corridor, um, over to ninety-three and Medford and Route one, um, in Chelsea. Medford Police Details. Chelsea Police Details. Regional Highway Signs, all these regional highway signs, um, will be up and active in directing people to our resort. Uh, Mr. Folk has also been working with Mass Highways Department. For all those variable message signs that you see on the highway, we'll be communicating way up and over north of there on all those message signs, event information, traffic, where to go, where to park. We're not gonna just start communicating and getting in front of you, um, as you get off the exit and get to the front door. We're gonna start as far away as possible and let you know what to expect. Um, Mr. Folk has a, a tremendous amount of experience planning, a lot of, um, significantly impactful events such as Boston Marathon planning and a lot of other regional planning. And in a minute, I'll introduce him to, to potentially add to any of this, but, um, I think with his experience, um, we're, we're certainly excited and confident in the team that he's put together and in the stakeholder organizations and meetings and the leadership that he's provided, um, to our organization and to getting this task done. I think this is no small effort. It's taken him since February, um, and all the stakeholders since February to put this plan together. Um, but none of this matters without PR and communication, and we talked about that. So, we need to build awareness for all these options. We're gonna be working with news media outlets and live interviews. We're gonna be putting, placing paid ads all over the place. We're gonna have a detailed transportation page on our website. Um, at every touch point possible, we'll be communicating directly to our red card holders how to get to the resort. We're gonna be going right to our guests, people that we know are coming to the resort. We're gonna be giving them ideas on how to get there through another means. We're gonna be advertising to people that may be interested in going to our resort, and we're gonna be telling them different ways to go. Um, it's a very detailed plan. We've been working with outside agency to put it together, and we're very close to launching this soon. Again, this is millions of dollars being spent on communicating transportation options to the property. Again, this is just more information on our marketing and communications. And this is a complete list of all the stakeholders that have participated in building this operations plan with Mr. Folk. As you can see, it's a very extensive list. Some of the folks I mentioned earlier was MBTA Operations and Planning, Boston Public Works, Massport, and the Massachusetts Gaming Commission. But this is thorough, it's exhaustive, it's taken months of planning and hundreds of hours of time. These, I can tell you personally, I've participated in many of these stakeholder meetings. They've been very well attended. Most communities, if not all communities, have had multiple representatives participating in each one of these events, in these planning meetings. We're very happy with the engagement, the regional engagement, and not just engagement, but collaboration. I don't want to speak for Jim, but it's been a wonderful collaborative effort with all the local communities, working together, hoping to make this a successful opening period and to ensure that this is as minimally impactful as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
We have any questions for Council McLaughlin?
Mr. President, I've been trying to take pages of notes as Mr. Taco talked, but just moving through the slides, I was wondering if, and I think my colleague should say it, can we get a copy of this?
Yep, I have it saved to the computer so that way, when you, before you leave, I can have them printed.
Okay, great. Just, again, just trying to take notes on this. I think we've just received a ton of new information that needs to have additional time to be able to review and to read those slide presentation closer so that we can understand some more of the details that you presented. I think it's a great beginning and start, but I think we need to understand it better and having those slides to be able to read some of the information was tough on letter and size for us to see. So, if we could get that information, I believe we're going to be back here on Thursday night to ask questions. I think that would be most appropriate, once we have the presentation in front of us so that we can read the information that were on the slides on the computers, I mean, on the TV today. But thank you, Mr. Taco.
Thank you. Council Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. Thank you very much for the overview, and I saw the emphasis on trying to keep people out of their cars with regards to the water shuttles, the various coaches, et cetera. And I'm assuming that all those details will help address those folks who won't get out of their cars. So, if, is there, if you could kind of like walk us through maybe folks that are coming north, right, from the south up north, folks that are coming 16, how we're going to implement the, I guess, the detail offices in order to keep the flow of traffic going?
Jim, you want to take that one?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here tonight. I think, like John said, we didn't go short with police details. We will have over 120 police details out through the region. Every circle intersection that you can think of that could get impacted, especially on 16, like you said, we will have police details out there. And this, these details are, we entered into MOUs with all the police departments to have this on reimbursable overtime. What reimbursable overtime means is that these details have to be filled, so they cannot go unfilled. So, this is something that I worked out with Chief Maisy here in Everett, but all of the police departments, we put together a reimbursable overtime plan. Encore is spending more money for the details, but we feel it's necessary to make sure we have those details.
Okay. Thank you. And I see the number here, just a quick shot of them, it's like 117.
Yeah.
Is that in the course of a 24-hour period? Is that at one given time?
At one given time.
So, throughout the process, we're going to have 100 and some odd.
Yeah, yes.
That's excellent.
It's pretty impressive, right?
Yeah.
So, the way we look at this is, especially, you know, I have done a lot of planning when I worked at the MBTA for big events like the marathon or Fourth of July, planning and Patriots parades and, you know, luckily Patriots parades and Bruins and all our sports. But, so, going into that, you need a team, and that's what we did. We got this team together, starting in February, of all of the stakeholders here in Massachusetts and the surrounding areas. We feel that this plan is a very good plan. Will we have to react to certain things during that day, of course? And that's why we'll have that unified command center, that we're all on the same page in making these decisions together, and everybody's making these decisions live. So, we'll get the words out to, you know, the various law enforcement and, or whether it's signage or whatever that is, that we have to make these decisions. But we will have a big command center that will have a lot of representatives in there and will be making calls on the fly.
Okay. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate the level of support staff that we're talking about. This is something that this community's never witnessed before. It's a pretty big event, and it's going to be, no matter how much you plan for, I think you alluded to it. You can plan and plan and plan, there's going to be contingencies and all these other things thrown out. What's your best guess about the number of vehicles per hour in peak over the course of 24-hour period that we might be encountering? And it is, there is 117 bodies there, trained professionals. Are you confident that they'll be able to keep the traffic moving and do what they need to do?
Yes, and to answer your first question about, you know, do I know how many we're going to be getting per hour? I have a feeling, you know, it could be, you know, in the thousands, like, you know, 2, 3,000. We will get turnover, though. People don't stay, they want to see it. If they're going to gamble, the average gambler actually gambles probably five hours or so. So, we will have that constant turnover. Your second question, I, just if you can remind me of that.
So, we talked about the number of vehicles, and like you said, there will be the turnover. As far as the number of staffing that we have?
Yes.
With those various trained professionals, are you confident that we're going to be able to keep moving the vehicles?
Yes, I am, I'm very confident in that. And what we, what we will do is if we see traffic really bad in a certain area, we might change where we're sending cars to. Even though Encore Garage might be open and we might have spots available, but if we see Sullivan Square just backing up very, you know, is backing up badly over there, then we're going to probably maybe send people over to Wellington and, you know, so they can just stay on, you know, the highway, get off the next exit, go to Wellington. There's, you know, a good number of spots, like 2,700 spots altogether there, if you count the outside spots and the inside spots. We could be sending people to River Green, we could, you know, so there's, there's different options. I worked at the convention center for a period of time, and that's what we did. We would change the traffic pattern based on the exact timing of that, and if traffic's backing up, we change that traffic pattern by signage and communications. And that's how we do it.
And that makes sense.
Yes.
I don't want to monopolize the time, but just one quick question.
Just one thing, gentlemen, we have two more speakers and we have four minutes until that seven o'clock meeting.
All right, I'll be really quick. One point I failed to mention is we deliberately selected Sunday, June 23 at 10:00 a.m. is the opening. And that was intentional. It's not because it's the most likely time that our casino guests would like to show up, it's because it's the lowest demand on the roads, and it's the lowest demand on our property. So, while there may be a spike, school's out, it's the weekend, it's a week before Fourth of July, and so we picked a day that we hopefully should have a lot of extra capacity on the roadways. We know that will add congestion, but we hopefully have done it at a time that will be as least impactful on the overall road network as possible.
Thank you.
And then the final, thank you very much. So, I know that we've got this number of detail offices. For roughly what time period, how long, and then, it's because we do expect, obviously, a drop-off.
Yes.
And then going forward, what level of personnel will there be going?
So, actually, we're going to have police officers actually starting the night before at certain locations, and they're going to go all the way until, I think, 2:00 the next morning. The next day, because it's a Monday, we'll have a plan that's scaled down a little bit, but then when we work back up to the weekend, we'll go to the same plan. But what we're going to do is, we are going to meet right after, you know, the opening day. We're going to make an assessment, and then we'll say, where do we need them, where should we scale back, and that's what we'll do. So, those meetings will occur right after the opening day, but we will, we will treat at least the next weekend, and it could be the whole summer for the weekends, like an opening day.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues.
Council McKinnon, and then Council Hanlon.
Before we begin, can we adjourn, adjourn to a time definite? Yeah, I'm sorry? Well, if they have questions tonight, they can do that. So, I'd like to adjourn the meeting just for a time. We'll have to reopen. We do have a public hearing on the next meeting, we have to open that. Yeah, to a time specific. And then that way we can reconvene it, not adjourning generally. It's not on the, it's not, doesn't say public hearing, but it was advertised, it's unfinished business, so we have to have that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second on that?
So, I would say...
Seven fifteen, seven twenty?
Yes.
I move to adjourn to seven forty.
Second. We had a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
And just to be clear, on Thursday, I was unaware of a Thursday commitment, so I have a conflict with Thursday. I don't think that was a meeting that was related to this.
It's in regards to the parking on the lower Broad, parking and traffic.
Yeah, I believe that's a municipal issue that's being worked on.
I think some of you...
The police will be here, I know, but I apologize, I have a conflict, so. But I'm always available on my phone, happy to meet again and answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it?
All right. We're going to open the council meeting. And...
Cook, you read the roll call, please.
The regular meeting at 7:00 o'clock, Council Capone?
Here.
Council DeFlorio?
Here.
Council Hanlon?
Here.
Council Marchesi?
Yes.
Council McKinnon?
Here.
Council McLaughlin?
Here.
Council Napolitano?
Here.
President Delisola?
Here.
Nine members present. We do have a quorum, Mr. President. The item that we are looking for, that we need to take, which is a public hearing, was placed under unfinished, I mean, unfinished business. It's item number 16. It's the Dover Amendment. So, if you'd take that on the suspension, please. On the suspension.
Council Capone?
Thank you. Mr. President, if we could take item 16 on suspension for purposes of a public hearing?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, take 16.
Item number 16. Thank you. As in, Mr. President, his ordinance offered by Council Anthony DePiero, that the zoning ordinances of the city of Everett are hereby amended by adding a new Section 19A, regulations governing applications for site plan review for Dover Amendment uses as follows. A project that has been determined by the building commissioner to be a protected use, classified as a Dover Amendment use, shall be reviewed under the Everett Zoning Ordinances with specific review standards to be promulgated within the planning board rules and regulations. This was, this was advertised correctly and for a public hearing.
Council, Council DePiero?
I have a, this is the Dover Amendment, which was referred back to us. We referred this on November 26 of 2018 to the city, the planning board. Last month, we sent you communication on the amendments. It's in regards to specifically, I think Tony Souza will be over shortly. If not, I can get him over here. He'll be able to brief you a little bit more, but it's in regards to exempting land uses for educational, religious, and childcare facilities. So, oh, Mr. Souza's here, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it? Just state your name and your position for the record.
Good evening. Tony Souza, Director of Planning and Development. The item before you is, as stated, it's the Dover Amendment, and in short, this is to modify the existing zoning ordinance to add Section 19A. Section 19 pertains to site plan review. Site plan review is applicable on certain projects based on size and number of housing units. 19A, this Dover Amendment, is related to site plan review, a limited site plan review for religious, educational, childcare facilities, and so on. This pertains to, there's an exemption under state law as it relates to these types of uses. However, over the years, and by the way, this Dover Amendment actually was part of state law back in the 1950s or so, and for, for years, it's been absent, actually having an amendment, a section in our zoning ordinance to handle educational uses, including charter schools, right? Childcare facilities and daycare facilities, religious places of worship. This would allow a limited site plan review as defined and as allowed by state law, which would pertain to regulations relating to the bulk and height of structures, determining yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage. Absent of this, we still have Section 19, which is through the planning board, traditional site plan review, which looks at these and other things such as aesthetics and so on. But this actually gives us more teeth as it relates to, again, places of worship, educational facilities, childcare facilities. To keep consistency, we require this for uses that are greater than 5,000 gross square feet. That's consistent with 19, Section 19, for all other projects in this city as well. So, we're not treating these projects any differently. If you meet the dimensional size as you would as any other type of use, then you are required to go through site plan. And this was done in light of various developments, including most recent developments with, or interest for, for religious and educational purposes. And again, it affirms that the board can regulate, can place conditions as it relates to specifically bulk and height of structures, the yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, and parking, building coverage. So, this went through the planning board, and the, basically, the ordinance itself, as you have received, fine-tunes the procedural process with Section 19 or Section 30 of the zoning ordinance. You folks may recall, down on the lower Broad, lower Broadway, we included a site, a special site plan review process. This takes the administrative procedures in both those areas and says, if you're doing a place of worship regardless, or an educational use whatnot, you follow the administrative procedures, which is notifying the abutters, sending out legal notice, process for plan submittal, and so on. The jurisdiction of review for this is also under the planning board, so there's no gray area, if you will. It's clear, it's, if you will, etched in stone. And something that's long overdue, frankly, in our city. Site plan review does not deny projects, right? You can place reasonable conditions within your jurisdiction, within your ability of review. And so, we also included a waiver provision, fee to be set in accordance with the planning board fee schedule, the ability that if the planning board decides to do a peer review, again, no different than what we do with other projects in the city. However, the scope of this is a little bit more limited, and that limitation is exactly verbatim from state law and state requirements. So, would ask, went through the planning board, passed favorably, would ask, you know, certainly, this will also require public comment, but would ask that the board, forgive me, that the council look upon this favorably as well, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Council Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. Thank you for the overview, Mr. Souza. And obviously, I understand the purpose for it, and it's to give the city some sort of say. When you're dealing with Dover Amendment issues, as you know, it's pretty wide open. So, the idea here... So, the idea here, though, is there would have to be specific, objective factors, which are outlined here. It is a limited site plan review, so you don't have that same breadth of authority that we do in other transactions, but it does serve a valuable purpose for the community to make sure that everything is developing in conformity in what we're looking to do. So, I appreciate the work that went into this, and I appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Marchese, and then Counsel DeFlorio.
Very quickly, so it says if a total establishment of five thousand gross feet, would that be the conversion of a building to a church or a school? Is that what we're talking about here? I'm a little bit lost here. Yeah, can I clarify a little bit faster?
Sure, so for clarification. Sure, so for clarification, with greater than five thousand gross square feet, so it could be an existing structure that gets modified for a school.
Does it include the land also? Would that five thousand be a small lot or just the building?
So, that would be pertaining to the square footage of the building itself.
Square footage of the building. Now, I think, do we presently have a parking ordinance for certain places? We had one in place, but we've never, I've never, we've never enforced it in the City of Everett.
Well, no. Incorrect. Section seventeen, as it relates to parking, does have standards for parking requirements for churches and places of worship.
But we've never established, but we've never used it in the city here.
Oh, no, we have.
Can you name one instance?
As it relates to places...
For a religious institution, and we open it up everywhere, there's no parking, so I'm just trying to feel, what, when do we...
Yeah, there's, well, last time, we had an institution of five thousand square feet. I believe there was one down on Lower Broadway, and perhaps one down in Commercial Triangle. But I'll be happy to follow up. But my recollection, I believe there's one or two in the last five years.
In charter school, the other one that comes to mind is the one at the Village.
Correct, correct.
Everything else hasn't had this regulation enforced, right?
So, they haven't had this regulation, correct.
So what this does, will put teeth to it, so if they come over and take something over, so this is, this is the one they will enforce?
So, this is when, yes, that it's clear, it's not ambiguous. What happened, for example, in one of those projects, which was the charter school, they sought a waiver of site plan, and it was discussed at that meeting, and certainly, in retrospect after the meeting, that it's critically important to have something like this in place. So it's clear, so again, so it's etched in stone, so there is no ambiguity. Because ultimately, this is left under the purview of the ISD director for his or her interpretation. And certainly, over the years, section nineteen, a person could make an argument that section nineteen, even as it is today, would apply. But to be clear and unambiguous, adopting nineteen A spells it out, so there is no question, there is no gray area. It's just really a best practice.
I know at the time, when we were open up, every place would be transformed to different church, other, the old clubs, there was never any parking at the clubs either. You know, like the Elks, for instance, the Knights, there's no, there's never any parking there.
Right, right.
And even though we had a restriction of a certain, another parking per seat, we never enforced it in the City of Everett.
So with respect to parking, as it relates to that, there is another provision in there that, in essence, if you're doing a conversion from one existing use to another existing use, and so it's allowed by zoning, think of in the Business District, for example, parking would not apply. And also, a five thousand square foot establishment, some of the places that would fit under this umbrella that are existing would be under. Not all, but some would be under.
So should this be reduced in size? Are you just happy with the size?
I am very comfortable with the five thousand because we're being consistent. We're being consistent with section nineteen, site plan review, keeping up five thousand. So, if we reduced, and we had this discussion, it would actually, it would raise red flags because we, again, we'd be treating protected uses under state law differently, to a higher standard, one would certainly argue. And so that's, to keep it consistent, we want to keep it virtually the same as nineteen.
All right, thank you. Let someone else have some questions.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel DeFlorio and Counsel McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Some of my questions are already answered, but is this time sensitive, something we have to vote on tonight? I like to, I don't know, I like to understand it a little better.
Sure.
And, I mean, you're doing a great job explaining it, but I need to absorb it.
Sure. To answer your question, no, it's not time sensitive. We've spent quite a bit of time? I'm sorry.
No, I'm sure you spend, believe me, I'm sure you spend much time working on this. But what I'm saying is, if we don't vote on this tonight, it's okay to vote on it at our next meeting.
Absolutely. And if there's any other questions or comments, whatnot, feel free to reach out to me, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Right, so that, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Counsel McLaughlin, and then Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I think this is a great piece that Counsel DePiero has put forward because of what we saw in the Village section this year. Many of us have tried to work on the charter school issue that has happened on Plymouth Street, many of my colleagues and I. But when I was, when we were fighting the issue to try to block or try to slow down the process of the charter school going into Plymouth Street until we could understand the full process, I was told that nineteen was in place currently, this was already in place, but that we couldn't, we couldn't enforce it because it was not enforceable by court statute that had already been overruled or overturned by court appeals in other places. So I'm wondering what has changed from that point, because I, again, I know that Counsel Capone, myself, many of us have fought and worked hard on this issue because of the issue that happened in the Village. So what has changed, Tony, and what has made this now presumably acceptable to our community or enforceable in our community, if previously, we had it on the books and we were not able to enforce it? What has changed?
Well, nineteen A makes it clear in stone, so there is no gray area for a developer or for the planning board. This makes it very clear. Remember when I mentioned earlier, sometimes there could be subject of interpretation, not only from ISD director, from planning director, and even from the boards, respectively. In hindsight, this frankly should have been in the books decades ago. This is a best practice, an old best practice now.
But wasn't it more of a middle-of-the-road interpretation of this, already in the books for our city?
Right, you run into a gray area. So if that's what you mean by middle-of-the-road, this makes it very clear that planning board does have jurisdiction.
Why, so then why would we not have tried to, what the charter school issue specifically, and I know Counsel Marchese said, we have churches popping up, opening up all over the city, why would we have not tried to fight or try to push back on what was going to be something that was going to hammer the Village as it has and has it, since day one?
Well, the question as it relates to nineteen versus nineteen A, as I said, this makes it etched in stone that the board has within its jurisdiction, so there is no gray area. There's no dispute, there's no ambiguity. With nineteen as it exists today, one could make the argument that they're protected use, right? They, who are they? Places of worship, childcare institutions, and educational institutions, right? And even with that, from staff recommendation, we thought, and this is not about denying a project.
Absolutely. It's making it more of a, more friendly, neighborhood-friendly...
Putting reasonable conditions within our jurisdiction. And furthermore, too, I mean, the ability to call for a peer review or further analysis of a traffic plan, to even request a traffic plan from applicants. This makes it clear. This makes it etched in stone.
If we had a more of a watered-down rule already on the books, and we were, I was told, and others were told, that we were not, it wasn't enforceable at that time, we're gonna now put, and again, I support it wholeheartedly, I think it's a great piece, but we're gonna put something much tougher on the books, and now we're gonna say that we're able to enforce what we weren't able to enforce before, with a more watered-down version of this? I'm just not sure what changed, the clarification of these facilities being exempt from, exempt from zone, local zoning laws and other issues, and now they're no longer exempt, and they're able to go through this process?
So, they are exempt under state law, but you do have the allowance to have a limited site plan review, and this is what, so you're allowed to have this tool, but you have to approve it, you have to have it in your zoning ordinance. Without it, you can still make an effort and say, well, section nineteen would, site plan review would prevail. We just won't look at, and that was the argument that we were making, that I was making, we just won't look at the other elements because it's not spelt out. We'll follow what it says under state law as it pertains to our jurisdiction, bulk, height of structure, yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage. But it was a gray area in the sense of, we don't have this in ordinance, right? We're leaving it to interpretation of different individuals, which then could be contested, and rightfully so, because protected uses are protected under state law, unless you have something in the books, or at best practice, have something in the books, so there is no gray area, and that's what we're doing. And this goes back, I mean, Dover itself, the history of this, which stems from...
I learned a lot from, about it, because of this facility.
Right, and we talked quite a bit about it, I remember.
We did.
But again, this is not, this was an old best practice, and what I mean by that lightly is something that unfortunately, we should have had in the books decades ago.
But we did have something in the books, so it was more watered-down.
Section nineteen was put in nineteen eighty-six or so, and section nineteen, a site plan review, pertains to all projects, whether it's a hotel, whether it's a new restaurant of a certain size, right? But residential and so on, site plan review prevails. However, if you, it's, a good practice is to have a carve-out that says site plan review also prevails to those projects that are protected under state law. So that way, there's no gray area when applicant comes before and says, well, this protected under state law, you can't ask us this. You can't ask us about the traffic plan down in X, Y, Z, or you can't ask us about the setback and so on. No, this gives us the teeth. And even though one could make, one crafty staffer could make the argument that, look, just based on history and so on, we do believe that you still have jurisdiction, planning board. Planning board feels much more comfortable, we feel much more comfortable having this etched in stone in our zoning ordinance, so there's no gray area. Applicants still have to apply, and the board can make conditions within their jurisdiction.
Okay, I'll...
I'll say, Counselor? Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, through you, Mr. President, to our invited guest. Mr. Souza, so this, the whole mechanism behind this being informed is to give us, as a city, some teeth to say maybe no, or look at it, or examine it a little bit further than what it has been? Because according to the last, the Village charter school that went in there, and the residents that are impacted by it, it's, it didn't work out too good, according to them. So, and I know that it didn't, and you must have been hearing just as much as the ward counselors and stuff like that have been hearing down there, so what is this, what will this do to better our situation as a city with certain properties like that coming in?
So, one would have to, if it's a project greater than five thousand square feet of gross floor area, they would have to come in and apply to the planning board. They would be required to go under this site plan review, and again, these are educational, childcare facilities, places of worship. The board itself, we couldn't deny a project through a site plan, no, but we can place reasonable conditions to require, pertaining, let's say, hours of operation, traffic plan, general layout, where the drop-off location would be, signage, signage on the lot, directional signage to the facility, setbacks, right, amount of space from adjacent properties and so on. This makes it clear in terms of the protected uses under state law. This gives the board the teeth to be able to do it. And it's something that, this isn't new, this, many other cities and towns have this, but the trick to this, an important thing, is to have it in the books, so we're not...
So we have more specifics in our books that we can turn to and say, this is what we want?
Approving this, we would have the teeth in our books to adequately, without it being contested, to be able to...
And anyone now, that's already, they're already grandfathered in, so they can just do what they want, correct?
Well, they've already been grandfathered in, yes. They've already been grandfathered in.
I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, so, you're correct, yes.
On that?
Yes.
So, okay. So, like, if we have a traffic situation where we do down the Village, we can actually address it and say, you know, how are you gonna fix this?
You could. And even absent of this, though, not to mislead here, but certainly, the Police Department, through the council, and some of you I know were even at the neighborhood meeting and so on, even ongoing, life safety issues are not exempt regardless, right? Life safety issues are life safety issues, they have to be addressed. So, it would have been more efficient, one would even say easier, if planning had the undeniable ability to put conditions to say, you know, we're gonna require this information, we wanna see your layout, we wanna see your parking plan, we wanna know your hours of operation, and put those in conditions, and if you're not following, just like this board puts conditions to licenses and so on, it gives them the teeth.
Will their decision come back to us at all, or through our review, or not?
No, no, it doesn't.
Okay, so, once it's gone, it's gone?
Well, it's gone, it's gone, but it's also in good regulatory hands, I believe.
Sure.
So...
Thank you for that. I'll say.
Thank you, Counsel. We have any more questions for our guest?
Excuse us for customary...
Counsel McLaughlin?
One last question on the Village section. Is there, if they were to change the, not the use of the building, but to add number of students, or to add more, is there, is there a mechanism that they would have to, under these, under this new guideline now, would that change the standard down there?
I would have to follow up on that.
Okay.
So, to your first point with respect to increasing student enrollment, it doesn't change the footprint of the building. Could definitely make an argument, change the frequency of it.
Yep.
So, I would have to follow up with you on that.
Right, it doesn't change, but it changes the frequency of the volume, which...
Yeah, it's...
Ratio turnover.
Ratio turnover, number of vehicles and so on.
Exactly. So I'm wondering if that, if that would be something that, and if there's any sort of change to that building, then it would come back here, correct?
I'll look into it.
Okay. Yeah, I would appreciate it, Tony. I have to say, the traffic, the opposite gap, they've been doing a great job as well as they can down the Village, but it's just, it's a bad situation down there, but it's not a lack of trying, that's for sure. They've been doing everything they could down there, work with myself and the mayor and colleagues to try to resolve some of those issues down there.
Sure. I'll be happy to follow up with a memo from our, you know, from our attorneys detailing those situations. Obviously, that may not be a situation there, but just see if it has any impact on existing operations.
I mean, just wanting even like, even other facilities, not just that one, I don't want to signal, but even other facilities throughout the city that use changeover frequency, whatever the case might be, are there other ways to have some of these smaller places come back to go, fall under some of these guidelines? And it's not to stop them from operating, it's just to kind of rope it in a little bit and to make it a better practice for the neighborhoods to operate and to live amongst each other. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to open the public hearing portion?
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, to reopen our meeting? All in favor? Anybody in favor of the piece we just talked about? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? That part is closed? Anybody oppose? Anybody oppose? Last time, anybody opposed? That part's closed. Seconded? All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Click, can you please...
Favor action?
Second.
Seconded? All in favor?
I'm gonna read the roll, Mr. President. This is for enrollment. So this is for the Dover Amendment for enrollment. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Delas, sorry. Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Marchese?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
Tenays, zero nays, you have enrolled the ordinance.
Thank you.
I have, I have a few people on the signing sheet, if I could, oh, yeah, yeah, that's right, we have to revert back to the other board. So again, I would adjourn this for time specific, and then we can always start a little bit after, whatever you think, Mr. Capone. Councillor?
I guess it depends on how many questions folks have.
Yeah, I mean, just put a time, and then if we go a little bit later, it's okay, just can't start earlier than it. That gives you 30 minutes, but I would do 20, and then if we ran later.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I make the motion, we adjourn to...
Yeah, just in case.
10 minutes of eight.
Do I have a second? Seconded, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it.
All right, and take a motion to reconvene the, reopen the...
Motion removed.
Special meeting.
Yeah, to reopen a special meeting.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Special meeting is back open.
We could invite our guest back up again, please.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Just please state your name for the record again.
James Folk.
John Taco.
For the questions I have from early meeting, councillor McKinnon, councillor Hanlon, and then councillor McLaughlin.
Through you, Mr. President, to our invited guests. How are you tonight, gentlemen? Thanks for the presentation, it was very good.
Thank you, sir.
I just have a couple of questions. In the presentation, you had said something of you were going to four of the boats, four boats that you're going to have.
The four boats?
Yeah.
Yes, it will eventually be four. It's, we're going to start out with three Encore boats, but we do, we're going to contract a fourth boat for our opening, just for the busy times, meaning the opening, and on the weekends, so we'll have, we will have a fourth boat. Our fourth boat won't be ready till August 1st, so that's why we're leasing something else. It won't be Encore branded, but it will still be running the same service that the Encore service would be running. So we will have four boats out there during our peak times.
And that will be the same size boat, same size vessel?
It's actually going to be a bigger one for that, for the fourth one that we're leasing for the opening, will hold up to 90 passengers.
Will that interfere with the bridge operations?
We will not run it at any times that would interfere with the bridge operation.
Okay. And then, let me see, you said something about private boating? Are you going to have another company come in, or is that what you were talking about?
That, private boating, we're talking to another water taxi company about running service from the airport over to Encore Boston Harbor.
Who is that?
That is, I'm trying to think of it, Rose Wharf Water Transportation.
Rose. And how big are their vessels? Would they interfere with the bridges?
No, these are smaller water taxis, they hold about 12 people to 14 people, and they would not impact the bridge to open.
Okay. And the, they would be following the marked buoys, I'm assuming, of no wake zone and stuff like that?
Absolutely.
There's other bigger ships that are coming in down there?
We don't anticipate the big ships coming in, in...
I'm talking about, there's other bigger industrial ships that are coming in down there.
Of course, yeah. So yeah, our boats will be following in, and like you said, the Coast Guard, Maritime Division, we're going to have a lot of law enforcement out there to make sure people are adhering to the laws of the sea.
And then, let me see here, now the, and I have another question, too, is the, and it's on the calendar for tonight, actually, I think, but it's something to do with the parking lot adjacent to it. How many cars are going to be available to park in that parking lot?
I think we had seven hundred, around seven hundred.
Do you mean the community lot across the street that's being managed by the city?
Yeah, it's a 700 lot, space lot. 700, okay. And so that's 700 cars that can be parked there, and those pedestrians that are going to be coming across for that, is that going to be with police escort, or how is that going to be done?
Yes, we'll have details at every single intersection to assist with crossings, and making sure that you're not crossing just one or two people at a time to impact traffic. So what they will do is, and we have, the way the path of travel is for the pedestrians, they'll be going down to one intersection, so we'll cross everybody at that one intersection for the most part. We can't force people, but we're trying to get people to go there.
We don't want to see anybody getting killed trying to run across the 99 here.
Yeah, so I think it's important to note that in the city's lower Broadway master plan, that we've had extensive conversations with Jay Monte and the mayor and his team about this. The corridor was designed to accommodate pedestrian traffic. I know we've talked about as another phase develops across the street, installing a pedestrian crossing above the street.
Yeah, that was my next question.
I anticipated your question.
Where is my pedestrian bridge?
See that? Always thinking one step ahead. So to address that question, we're still committed for that bridge when we develop the next phase of the project, but it's been really important, it's been reiterated to us a number of times, the signals can accommodate pedestrian crossings, they were designed that way. When we redesigned Broadway, it was to calm traffic down and create safe crossings at street level. That is important to the city, it's important to Jay Monte and the mayor to ensure that that safe crossing still happens. Whether or not you're in our pedestrian bridge, you want residents from the backyard and the neighborhood to be able to cross safely, they don't need to go all the way down to our bridge and get over. We're not creating a highway that's going through the area where people are racing through. So all those lights have been timed to accommodate pedestrians. And so I think it's a really important point to reiterate, because we continue to talk about bridges and everything, but not with the intention of discouraging pedestrian activity at a street level. I know through the extensive lower Broadway master planning effort, that was a big part of what the community wanted to see, and what the city wanted to see in the neighborhood.
Did you have something to share? I seen you smiling at somebody out there.
No, somebody made a face at me, but that's about it.
Oh, they're making faces now out there. Stop making them faces.
I won't say who it was.
So with that being said, so time range on the pedestrian bridge?
The time range would be completely time-dependent on when we started a future phase development. As you know, permitting process on this project alone was a few years, so I don't anticipate it happening in the near term. It's going to be more of a medium or long-term consideration. It would happen in conjunction with another phase of development, which hasn't even begun to start the design process. Of course, you'll be considered as part of that design process as we did with our original planning effort. There'll be many rounds of municipal, state, and regional review of what we do across the street, and the pedestrian bridge would be a part of that.
And the, now, you said, mentioned a command center? Who's fortifying the command center down there?
The state police, actually, Troop H will be supplying the command center, the mobile command center.
Okay. And that's just for the opening?
It will be there probably for the whole week, and we'll have probably somebody in there for, you know, the next weekend. If we need it during the week, we will have it staffed, so, but we'll make that determination based on demand, having that open. But it will be there. They have to move it for the 4th of July, I can say that.
And then bring, okay. And then, let's see, so time period of when you're going to keep this type of activity up, and when you're going to stop that, is when you check it out and see where you have to make your adjustments and then go from there?
Absolutely, yes. We'll get all the stakeholders, again, together, and we will make that determination together, how long this lasts for. And if it has to last for, like I said, you know, weeks, then it'll last for weeks. If it's, you know, we just see it for the first couple of weeks, then we start scaling back. But we will always have law enforcement out there, like on our busy nights, meaning, you know, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday, we'll have law enforcement, not to probably this extent that you saw during the presentation.
Yeah, I would think they'll kick back, kick it back a little bit. The other question is, though, is now the Sullivan ramp, where that's going to be a problem, has anybody discussed that yet, when this thing's opening up, and then also if it's going Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or over the weekend? Because I can foresee that being a problem.
For the opening period?
For the opening period and then going forward?
Yeah, so to be honest, it shouldn't be a problem going forward, and I think it's important to note that we had extensive reviews and studies done on the building.
Not bad coming from a guy from Melrose. We're all from Everett, so we want to know about the extensive reports and stuff.
Yeah, so they're out there, they're thousands of pages each, the city's reviewed it, the transportation team has reviewed it over several years. We had the ENF, the DEIR, the FEIR, the SFEIR, the SSFEIR, which was reviewed by everyone, and we're going back into ancient history at this point, but they were reviewed by everybody. If you remember, we were required to mitigate our peak-on-peak. So what that means, we take the peak traffic of the road, and we stack what we anticipate our peak to be, which is at a completely different hour. So our four, five o'clock PM traffic is significantly lower than our eight or nine PM expectation. We got to take that eight, nine PM hour, stack it along the roadway peak, and mitigate to that level. So we did that. And so what you should see past this opening period of intense interest by the local regional community, is that things should level out, and things should get better, and we shouldn't need any, with all the mitigation, $68 million in regional mitigation improvements, every intersection which is wrapping up now, new signals, new timing, new technology, cameras, lane widening, striping, turning lanes. I mean, if we talk about the off-ramp off of 93 specifically, we added a right-hand turn lane, we also formalized the turns at Spice and D Street, which allows you to not even enter Sullivan Station. We rerouted all the bus traffic to keep more buses out of Sullivan Square. In fact, all buses that don't need to go around Sullivan Square won't go around Sullivan Square. So if you're going from Somerville and back, or in the old configuration, they'd have to drive through the circle and then enter. Now they can turn right in. Coming north from Somerville Medford, same thing, they don't have to enter that way. And also, what's the street there that used to be closed to bus only? Is that Cambridge Street? That's the, that's now, it will be open in the next week or two, I'll say. The pavement's done, the striping is in, the signage is in place, the new lighting's in place. So all these things should amount to a more well-developed roadway corridor that we should not need additional assistance. That was the original design. Our design wasn't...
Now, Mr. Taco, I'm glad that you said that. It's $68 million in mitigation that we've already done, correct? What if that doesn't work?
Well, we're monitored, so they...
Okay, so if it doesn't work, what happens next? Are we going to be doing anything else to fix it, or?
So we anticipate that it will work, the state will monitor, and the gaming commission will monitor how it all works, and as part of the MEPA processes, and this isn't specific to our development, any development will go through regular monitoring, and if there are unanticipated impacts or things need to be changed, we're on the hook for that, and we know that.
So it's a review after a year or so, or whatever?
It's every six months.
Six months.
And what will happen is they'll take a look at everything, including our mode splits. So everything we said here, we need to get people, we promised that people would be getting out of their cars and traveling to the resort. So this isn't just hopeful and wishful thinking, these are commitments that we've made to the state, to the region, to the city, and we intend to help create those routines within our customer base. So we take this very seriously. If we don't hit these mode splits, we need to make changes. If traffic's backed up for some other reason, we're on the hook to make some changes. So this is an ongoing iterative process, and we intend to live up to our commitments.
Think it's going to be a great project.
Thank you.
And can't wait to see it and everything else like that, but as, you know, one of the members on this board and the host community, we need to make sure that everything is going to go right for the host community. So that's why we're asking these questions. It's nothing personal, it's just we want to make sure that these things are going to be right there, right on the spot. If things are happening bad, we want them fixed.
Yeah, look...
We don't want to be waiting years and years and years to get them fixed either, so...
We're aligned, we have a mutual interest in ensuring our folks have the opportunity to get to the resort. If no one can get to the resort, it's not long that they won't come back, and when they don't come back, then people don't work here anymore, and a lot of bad things happen.
Sure.
So it's in everyone's best interest to make sure that this corridor stays free of congestion and gets people in and out safely. Your tax revenue depends on it, our employees depend on it, our team depends on it, our shareholders depend on it, they're commitments we made, we have every intention of developing in other jurisdictions, and an important part of that, for the same reasons when I came in front of you seven years ago, we need to live up to those commitments. And so one big thing in every jurisdiction is going to be traffic, and to say that it was an unmitigated disaster up here won't bode well for future expansion and development in other areas.
Anywhere else.
So it's in everyone's best interest to keep people moving through the corridor.
Thank you for that.
Can I just add one thing, sir? As part of us monitoring, actually, we have to do pre-opening monitoring, that's occurring right now, as far as traffic monitoring, and that, the results for that will go to the gaming commission, will go to the state mass DOT, and then we have to go back out six months from then, see what the differences are with the traffic, and then six months after that. So these are commitments that we've made through a traffic demand management plan, but we are currently out there doing checks, not just for cars, but for bicycles and turns and everything, and then we'll then take the next six months and look at them, do a comparison.
So you're doing, you're gathering data?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes, sir.
Analysis, okay.
Yeah.
And then from that point there, you'll adjust to where you're going to be?
I just wanted to add one thing, too...
It's better to be proactive than reactive.
Exactly, exactly, sir, I agree. But between the hours of 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, we have almost 6,000 employees to start. They cannot start or finish their shift between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. The reason for that is to keep them off the roads during the rush hour. So that relates to the AM, too, so you couldn't make a, you know, nine to five, nobody can work nine to five, let's say.
Yeah.
Because we're trying to be, again, proactive with keeping, you know, our employees' cars off the road. And like John said, the other thing we did was a heavy MBTA subsidy, one of the largest that I've ever heard of, through our program, to make sure people were trying to take public transportation.
Awesome.
And one other thing, we had the similar meeting in Charlestown last week, and it was really interesting that the way that it was coordinated, what we realized is, and I grew up in the North Shore, I grew up in Reading, I spent seven years familiarizing myself with your community, which I love. All I've seen in my entire life before our project is us losing infrastructure. Everett's lost the Orange Line Station.
Uh huh.
You lost Everett Station. We had the overpasses over Sullivan Square, we lost those. We lost on-ramps by City Square in Charlestown that went onto 93. We spent my entire life losing infrastructure in this area. Right now, and I don't want to take complete credit for it, but I think I will a little bit, because we put a big giant spotlight on this region, we have over $500 million in infrastructure. Not all that we're paying for, but that the state and the federal government are investing in making this a better area. So over the next 10 years...
Is that matching? Are they matching?
I, it, there's a whole different form, it's a combination of state, federal, our money's included in there, it's part of the Rutherford Ave redevelopment project, there's the North Washington Street Bridge project.
So it's a, it's a combined?
It's a combined number, but my entire generation, we didn't add a single thing.
Uh huh.
You know, the most recent addition that I've seen was the Alfred Street Bridge that was recently complete. I don't remember any infrastructure being added to the region.
Completed twice, wow. That was amazing, wasn't it?
So I think that the future's bright for this region, I think. In 2022, work gets kicked off for the long-term improvements in Rutherford Ave and Sullivan Square, which includes underpasses, I know there's a lot of questions about that over the years. The funding's secure at the state level, at the federal level, everything's in place to get it going. They delayed it a year, to be honest, related to all the other work that's happening in the area. You know, unfortunately, we've been saddled with the Tobin Bridge reconstruction.
So...
But it's necessary, saddled, saddled with the Tobin Bridge, the impacts from the Tobin Bridge reconstruction. Well, we'll get through that.
Closing of one lane right now?
Yeah, so we'll get through all of it, it's not ideal for anyone, it's not ideal for us, but the future's bright. We'll get through that, we'll get through the Sullivan Square, Rutherford Ave reconstruction, and then there's going to be millions and millions of dollars of new infrastructure millions of dollars of new infrastructure that's opened over the next 10 to 15 years that should be, I think, a tremendous lift to this region.
Sure. And that's more than welcome. You know what I'm saying? So I think people would want to see that type of development and that type of mitigation to the roadways. Yeah. My, I don't have any further questions from him, but I actually have a question to you, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So on the 20, what day, the...
Thursday. Opening?
No, no. What day is the police coming up and...
That's Thursday. It's Thursday.
...and we're going to have the Coast Guard here again. They were in the audience. I don't know if they're still here or not, but they're all coming up?
Oh. Everyone's been invited to be invited.
They're invited. They don't, I know it doesn't sound good. They don't have to come here.
Okay.
But they are invited.
Everyone's been invited that you were invited.
Well, they were here tonight. That's why. I mean, I seen one of them sitting in the audience. So, I mean, if they're here tonight, they should be here, you know, at for our meeting as well.
Let's hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And gentlemen, please excuse my back, but unfortunately, that's the way our microphones work. I have a nice presentation, John, and I just have two questions, one for each of you. John, you had mentioned in several cases that we'll be allowing people to park and picking them up and charging them for transportation, in particular the boats. I think it was $7. Is that a round trip cost?
That's a per-trip, one-way.
One-way. So if they get to the resort for $7, when they're leaving, they have to pay $7 to get back to their car?
Correct.
That's correct. And to you, sir, the, you brought up the situation of the water taxis doing the same thing. I imagine that will be a similar charge, one-way, whatever it costs and one-way back.
I actually believe that that's more expensive.
The water taxis, I believe, I believe, and I'm not 100% positive, I think it's $14 per trip.
Okay, whatever. My, so my other question to you then is that, will the water taxi be allowed to park at the Wind Resort, the Encore Resort, to pick up passengers? I mean, to wait for them?
Absolutely.
So is that, is that correct, John? They'll be able to use, you'll be able to use that area to park?
Correct. They'll, they'll be used, yeah, they'll be able to touch and go. They only show up on-call. So if you're taking a water taxi, which I've done, it's not like there's taxi stands. There's not enough boats to have a stand at each location. So you call ahead, the taxi shows up, you board the vessel, you pay, and then you can pick whatever destination you, that you want them to take you, including they go out to the Harbor Island. So they service a lot more area than us. And I believe their fare is dependent on where you want them to go. But it is going to be more expensive than our $7.
So who, who will call them? Both, both for the water taxi service and for the service that we're providing? Who will call these boats to come back and pick up the passengers?
It could be, as far as the water taxis, it could be our personnel, transportation personnel. If they get enough people, if we have enough people to make it, you know, worth their while, let's say, they will come. They said that. But they want to only do the airport right now, back and forth to the airport. So they won't be coming from other destinations, probably from the downtown area, to service our resort. Unless there's a huge demand. If they see the demand, then hopefully they'll, they'll want to do it.
I mean, I just want to see someone that's at the, at the resort and decide that they've either made enough or lost enough or want to go home, and they need to go out onto the dock. How do they get a boat to come and get them?
We have the direct number for that water taxi company, and we...
For the water taxi, John, for us, how that's going to work?
So I think, what are we, every 20 minutes?
It's, yeah, so it's every 20 to 30 minutes on schedule.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. I have Counselor McLaughlin, and then Counselor Paul Tyner. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I was hoping that we were going to see the presentation so that we could actually go through it and ask questions. There was a lot of information given tonight, and I think this may be one of the most important issues we've dealt with in these chambers.
You mean the package?
The package.
It is, it is coming. But before you leave tonight, you'll have it.
Yeah. Yeah, I have to, I have to first get approval, which I believe I will, to make that public.
Oh, I got it.
A public document.
Yeah, I already talked about it.
Okay, then you'll get it.
Yeah.
You'll have it before you leave tonight.
But can, can one of these individuals come back to another? I mean, there was a lot of information given tonight that I think needs to be clarified for people at home. Not even for us, but for the people at home. You know, Mr. Folk said that if the traffic gets backed up, that they're going to, you know, pull the button and create another path. Well, there's only one road. Lower Broadway is only so wide. There's only one, one way in and one way out. There's, you know, other facilities that he's talked about, whether it was at the Convention Center or the Spur and Events. There's a lot of other roads around those areas that are much bigger sections that you can shut down a street here or close a street there and detour traffic around. Broadway's one road. It's...
Yeah. But, but we won't, we won't send them down Broadway. That's what I was, I was trying to say. So, so if you're coming, you know, on 16 and River Green is available and we don't want the cars coming on Broadway, then we can divert them into River Green. We can revert them down, divert them down to Wellington. If it's in the Sullivan Square area, we can do the same thing and divert these cars to Wellington, so they do not go up and down Broadway. I understand what you're saying, but we...
No, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be...
No, 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 no. I get it. No, I understand what you're saying. But, but that's how we do it. So, but there are a few different things that we can do. We have a few tricks up usly that, that we can utilize to divert traffic.
And I'll be honest, Mr. President, I had, you had appointed several members to serve on a committee because I thought we were going to be able to have these in-depth conversations and get, and ask these types of questions, so we didn't have to do it here tonight. But again, that communication has not opened up and that has not transpired. I think that this is something that needs to be thoroughly invested by us, by our colleagues, so that we can answer questions at home to residents. We all get questioned all day long on traffic right now. The biggest topic...
Well, you have the opportunity. If you have questions...
I'd like to see the packet. I mean...
You'll have the, Counselor, you'll have the packet before you leave here tonight.
So, but they can't come back Thursday? Can we set another date?
They, I'm sure they can come back, any date we want. I'm sure they'll agree to come back anytime we need to speak to them.
Yeah, so, of course. And I've committed to doing regular monthly updates. I want to be as forward and transparent as possible.
And you always are, Joe. Absolutely.
But we're, we have 26 days to open the resort, and there's not going to be new information. So we're at the tail end of making the sausage. That's what you saw here today. These are based off of studies and numbers and, we're not going to learn anything between now and then until after we open. So I'm not sure it serves anyone well. Mr. Folk and his team have a lot to do. They're in regular communications with your public safety officials, the Everett PD. I think, please give us a chance to open the resort, learn what we learned, and then we're happy to come back after. I just don't see us unveiling a lot of new information between now and then. This is theoretical planning. We've done a lot of study. We've put a lot of thought into it, and we had a lot of collaboration. We'll see how it shakes out.
But I think the plan that you presented tonight was great. But I think there's questions that should be answered about that plan. I'm not asking you guys to go back and reinvent the wheel, but just to dissect more of the plan that was already presented tonight, to already look at it.
Well, I look, I look this, Counselor. Nothing against any of my colleagues here. I know anybody most of my life. We have to leave it in the hands of the professionals here to come up with the plan. I mean, we could sit here and nitpick everything on here, but we're not...
Not about nitpicking, Mr. President.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean that. Come on. But we're not professionals on traffic. These gentlemen worked at the Boston Marathon, the Trade Center, all these major events. So I think we have to leave it...
Which was a lot different circumstance, Mr. President.
But we're, they're hands, Counselor.
It was a much bigger...
Counselor, this isn't the place to go back.
Right. We should have had those meetings when you appointed the members to the committee, and we weren't extending the invitation.
You have the information by the end of the day. Counselor Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand the council's concern because we are, no matter what you say, no matter what happens, no matter how much study you've done, we are going to have issues the first couple of months. And we expect that. And I think the city of Everett needs to expect that. So we don't, you're not going to have, the first three months, I think it's going to be a lot of curiosity, a lot of people coming to see. So after two or three months, we see what the problems are, and we correct the issues. But we don't have a crystal ball, and we don't know what's going to happen. So by you giving us the presentation, if anybody has any questions, we'd be more than glad to call you up and say, hey, John, we missed this. This is a question that I have that one of my constituents wants to know. Once we have a copy of that presentation, we will be able to explain a lot to our constituents, how many boats, the buses you have, what, what you're doing. But I understand you don't have a crystal ball, but everybody has to understand, June, July, and August, my recommendation is going to be a lot of walking. All right? We are not going to be able to get out of our houses. I expect it. All right? Not that that's good news for our people, but...
You're preparing for the worst. I'm going to hope for the best.
I'm preparing for the worst and hope for the best. Okay? But what I'm saying is, you have to give it a chance. When something opens, first opens, you have to give it a chance. When Foxwoods first opened, the, the cars were all the way at the highway. Well, there's no cars all the way at the highway now. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, hopefully you'll do a lot better than Foxwoods. I didn't mean it in that sense.
I hope so.
But at the beginning, MGM and Springfield, it was the same thing. All right? So at the beginning, there will be some problems. And hopefully, we try to resolve them the best that we can. If we do have problems, and there's a big issue, who do we contact?
You're always welcome to call me.
Okay. I have your cell phone, John.
You have my cell phone. Please call me.
Okay. That's dangerous.
Text me. Do anything you want. Call me on my cell, please. That's the best way to get me. And I have a direct line to Jim. I'm sure Jim would be happy to take your call, too. But just for, for...
I'm not talking, I'm not calling just for any little money thing.
I, I call Jim 10 times a day and rattle his cages a little bit. So please, we're an open book. We want to be as, as open and transparent as possible. We're all learning at this, too. I want to take a minute and just thank everybody watching. Thank the community for your patience through the construction phase, which I know wasn't easy, and for, for your anticipated patience through our opening period. We're really excited. All the good that is coming, don't forget about the good and the 5,800 people that are going to work in the next week or two weeks. You know, but with that comes some challenges that we hope to overcome. I think we're going to all be better in the long run. We're always an open book. In addition, the Everett Police Department participates regularly in the stakeholder group. So you're welcome to communicate any concerns directly to us through the police with us, no problem, however you want to do it. But that's the best avenue is to participate in that way and integrate it as part of the stakeholder meetings, because that way, all the law enforcement officials are together and talking about the same things.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Paul Tyner?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for coming down tonight. I mean, you made it very clear. You've given us a good idea of how the command structure is going to be down there for law enforcement, the alternate routes. We know people are not going to jump on it on board these buses the first day. The intent is to educate them, to be able to get them to do that. And the one thing that I think has gotten missed in the last couple of conversations here is that, and you stated it, opening day, the command team is still going to meet to see what worked and what didn't work. And you'll make refinements and adjustments going into the second day. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. Yes.
I mean, that's just good, that's just good, good business in a situation like this. So it's not that these, it's important to understand, for our residents to understand, that what you're presenting right here is the game plan.
That's correct.
But it's not set in stone.
That's correct.
If something in the game plan isn't working, you're having ongoing meetings to make those adjustments and make those refinements to make it work.
Yes, sir. We literally, literally have a playbook. So in that playbook, it will say, if this happens, this is how we react to it, and this is who we call, this is how we do it. But we literally have what we call a game plan. That game plan's for opening day, opening period, but our busy days, when we, we'll have busy days if we have some entertainment or something going on at the resort. But, but we have a substantial game, not game plan, but playbook.
Yeah. I mean, I've read some of the, I've read some of the studies regarding MGH is open, I'm sorry, MGM's opening, IKEA's opening. So I, I know that the same thing there. What started off on day one is not
That's correct.
how the program evolved, because human nature, it comes into the mix. You've got to make adjustments.
Yes, sir.
Now, you said the state police, I was going to, I was going to ask about this, and then there was some conversation about the command structure. So the state police are the, are the, creating the command structure. They'll be coordinating all activities with law enforcement, their various details?
Well, they, they do it for their own troops. But every individual law enforcement, they're taking charge of their areas. But we will all work together in the command center post. And if we need, you know, more, if we see we need state police to move in a certain area, then if that troop that's in the room, we tell them to move over there because there's, there's a problem. Every police will have their, their own folks in that command center, as well as Medford, and, you know, every, every law enforcement agency locally will be represented in there.
Yeah, I think I know the answer to this question, but I have to ask, because the public's going to ask this. So again, there's not a situation where we may need it, the command center may need an Everett detail that's in, that's in the vicinity of an issue to respond, and that detail's not going to turn around and say, well, we don't answer to you, we answer to the chief.
I can't speak for the chief, but I know, I know the way that's set up in there.
It's coordinated.
It's coordinated, yes. We work together. We, we've been a team on this, like John said, since February. Every law enforcement agency understands that this is for the whole community and the state. And, and we, we will work together as a team.
And that's the point I was leading to, is there's coordination between the various elements, so there's some consistency, there's review process, able to be some flexibility, adjustments.
Yep.
All right. Well, that's the thing that's important, I think, our residents and our membership here need to understand as well. Just because you've rolled this out, this isn't the way it's going to always be if, in fact, there's issues that you find out after the fact.
Yeah. Or if we see successes, then we might even just, yeah, we, we might capitalize on those successes and, and actually add more service. Or do something like, you know, add more boats if that, they, which I think they're going to be very successful. If we need more, more regional bus service, because that's running really well. Or, or maybe we didn't hit a certain area that we thought we should, maybe we might add to it. So, so yeah, those are the type of things that, that we will do.
No, I think it's great. I mean, I've been representing that area for over 20 years. I've never seen as much improvement as what's going on down there. So, no, I'm, I'm excited for it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for all the details.
Thank you. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
They have, they have one more speaker. Counselor Metuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank these gentlemen for the presentation this evening. There's an item on the agenda. It's to do with the casino. I may as well bring it up. But as a city father for quite a long time, I suggest that Encore put a complaint line in, or a suggest, a complaint line, a hotline.
Oh, complaint line, yeah.
Okay, similar to what Massport has. We have some issues with airplane noise. I don't want to be called every night, and I'm sure my colleagues don't want to be. If a car from Alabama is parked in front of your house for a week, and we know where they're at, you know, you have an obligation to take the curse off of me particularly, okay? Because I live, I think, the closest to the casino. But I, you know, it's on the agenda tonight, so I'm going to refer it to Mr. Fock and Mr. Tocco.
Sure, so...
And these issues, hold on. These issues could be transportation buses, for instance, that are driving the wrong route. They could be employees that have done something that's not quite right, or maybe something good. It's a suggestion department. And I suggest that you advertise, now you're opening in 26 days. We need to have some input from, if there's a serious issue here, that something's not quite right, particularly with the parking lot down there and the pedestrian traffic. It could be anything, the bikes. I would like to have that installed before you open and advertise to the citizenry of this community, the host community, which is us. And it would serve a purpose. And, you know, you log in what these complaints were so that we, we understand that we're on the same page. We want a great city. But, you know, I don't want people calling me on a daily basis if they have an issue regarding Encore. You understand?
Yep. So we agree. We have a 24-hour day, seven-day-a-week call center, staff with dozens of individuals. They're trained and are able to get in touch with any of us at any time of day. So that number's 857-770-7000. And if you are so interested in doing so, they'll also take your reservation for a night at the resort.
Well... That's possibility.
Why can't we reserve your seat on the bus?
But no, my, it has to be known to the public. In other words, we have three newspapers in this community.
Yep. So any, any, any questions, comments, reservations, anything?
Oh, this isn't about the hotel. This is about complaints or problems, okay?
Anything.
Yeah, but I don't want somebody, well, I'm, what hotel room do you want? No, no. This is exclusively for a problem.
I know, it, it's...
Not a whole room full of people. One person answers the phone. Yes, what's your, what's your issue? We'd like to, you know, address it. This is not about renting a hotel room or gambling.
So that's what they do. They, they answer the phone, ask how they can help you?
So it's going to be a gamble. I, I suggest to you, Mr. Tocco, that you have an exclusive complaint line.
So...
To start off with.
We have a line that's staffed, very well-staffed.
Don't you think that's a reasonable request?
It is, and that's why we do it this way, so that our calls...
Where does the reservations for the hotel rooms come in? I don't think that.
They, they can take reservations.
Yeah, but this is, I think you're missing my point.
They can also answer questions and direct folks right to me.
You're missing my point, Mr. Taco.
They can direct folks right to Mr. Folk. They can direct folks right to Mr. DeSalvio.
Mr. Fock, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I do. Understand what I'm trying to say.
Okay. I want a complaint line. I'm requesting that. It's on the agenda, and if the majority of this membership feels the same way, it's going to be referred to you, okay?
That's fine.
Thank you.
We have the line.
Any more questions for our guest?
Excuse us, guys. Sorry. Thanks.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
For your presentation.
Accept the presentation, place on file.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
During the special meeting? Yep. Move to adjourn the special meeting?
Seconded, all in favor? All opposed to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
I do have a few people on the sign-in sheet. If we can go off my sign-in sheet, item number nine would be the first one.
We have to open cover.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I'm sorry, that one.
Second motion.
All in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it. Gentlemen. Thank you.
You can open for public anticipation. I didn't, I didn't see anyone on the sign-in sheet, so you can just ask if anybody would like to, I didn't see anybody on the sign-in sheet, so...
Anybody in the audience want to speak on anything on the item, please? Excuse me?
No one's up there, so...
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Anybody in the audience like to speak? It's closed. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? The ayes have it.
Now, councilors, item number nine would be the next item on the agenda. Is there a guest here?
Please read number nine, please.
Item number nine is a petition offered by councilor, this is, I'm sorry, these are Committee on Community and Business Development reports. Item number nine is a petition offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Junior as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves the renewal for an auto body repair license with changes for accurate collision at 36 Mystic Street. The petitioner was looking to increase his hours to extend it till 10 o'clock at night. The, I'm just going to give you a brief rundown that the committee met a week ago, and their report was to report back unfavorable with this recommendation.
Constable Florio?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a long discussion in regards to this business is open to 10 o'clock at night. We have numerous businesses in the city of Everett that do the same thing. It's opening up a can of worms. And I, we feel, I'm sure my colleagues feel the same, they can speak for themselves, that no body shop should be open to 10 o'clock at night. So, we have other body shops that are in residential area. This happens to be in a residential area. I know there's only a few houses, but we highly recommend, I'm asking my councilors please not to vote for this because we will be opening up a can of worms for every other auto body shop in, in the area. Thank you.
Counselor? Okay.
Yep. You can do that first.
Okay. Constable Capone?
Just a quick question through you to our clerk.
Yes.
As it's written, there's a renewal for the license with changes.
With changes. He's already been renewed.
Okay.
For his general, so don't forget, regular renewals come straight to me.
So, we don't have to worry about that?
And I, and he approved it. So, you don't have to worry that he's not going to keep his license.
Okay.
He still has his license with his old hours.
Okay.
This is for an extended hours on top of what he already has.
That was exactly what I'm concerned.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Constable Matusky? Constable McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this, this business is right across from the Encore Resort, and I thought maybe that this type of business would be eliminated by the purchase of properties, but this evidently stayed on Mystic Street. My grandmother used to live on that street, so I know the area very well. Needless to say, and I was hoping that the Wild West days would be over down in that area, okay? I voted against this license for renewal. The auto body day shops are over for me, okay? There's some good ones down there, and they're in business for many years, and their grandfathered in. But to extend this person's license to later hours, I watched some of the, was it the Business Development Committee meeting? And, you know, one thing that nobody brought up is that the man has issues, okay? The business has issues, not the man. Excuse me. And it was in the paper that, you know, there's a reason why the insurance rates in Massachusetts are pretty high, okay? False claims and this and that. You know, I don't, if, maybe after that case is over, I'd consider voting for an extended hour. But no, I wouldn't even consider it. The hours are the hours that he has now, and, you know, he's lucky to even have the license as far as I'm concerned.
I'm sorry.
I don't know the man, but as I said, you know, you, I was hoping that all those businesses and at some point, the scrap metal dealers would be out of that area also and develop the waterfront area there. But let's be real here. To even consider extending the hours of this, this business is over the top. If the man's not making enough revenue there to exist there, well, he bought the business. I don't know how it operates, but then there's issues there, you know? And there is a home across the street. I don't know, though they didn't sell it either. That's one of the last old outs. Needless to say, I'm all done with this type of business. I'm not voting for any new licenses in that area anymore, and that's the end of that. So, I ask my colleagues to deny the extension of any hours. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Constable McKinnon, and then Constable Marchesi.
Thank you, Mr. President. The chairwoman said it right. We were in the committee together on this. I met the gentleman after the fact, but this, for everyone's information, there would be 55 other licenses probably sitting here trying to get their licenses extended if we actually do this now. So, we need to really think about this. If we're voting on this tonight, we need, I'm going to be voting no because of that reason. Because if we give it to one, they're all going to be up here in line waiting for the next one to get it, the next one to get it. So, that reason alone, plus various other reasons, I'm going to be voting no. And I was in the committee. The committee did its work, and you had the chairwoman came out. I'm coming out of the committee saying no. So, you just vote the way that you feel with your conscience, but we're advising you that this probably should not go that way. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Constable Marchesi and Constable Capone.
I'm, I'm fine. I just want to hear what the committee result was. That's all.
Constable Capone, then Constable Hanlon.
Very briefly, Mr. President, just to echo the sentiments, I did watch the meeting online. I was ill. I couldn't attend the actual meeting. I am on the committee. I think the membership did a good job with it and for the exact reasons why they stated. There are 55 combination mechanical auto body shops. And if you allow extended hours for one, you better be prepared to allow extended hours for everyone else. I think you're setting a bad precedent. And for that reason, I'm supporting the committee. I'll be voting against this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Constable Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with everyone here, but, you know, we have to remember that our most recent parliamentary procedure classes indicated that a negative vote is not a vote at all. A negative motion is not a motion. So, therefore, I'd like to move favorable action on this item.
Second motion.
Roll call vote.
Favorable action on the order. Constable Capone?
No.
Constable DeForio?
No.
Constable DePiero?
No.
Constable Hanlon?
No.
Constable Marchesi?
No.
Constable Matusky?
No.
Constable McKinnon?
No.
Constable McLaughlin?
No.
Constable Polatano?
No.
And President Delasola?
No.
There would be zero ayes, 10 nays. You have denied the extended hours. Councilors, item number 13 is the next item on the agenda.
Item number 13? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can you read 13 on the agenda, please?
Again, this is Committee on Business and Development report. Item number 13 is a petition offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Junior as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves a new open-air parking license for Ministerio Monte di San at 108 through 114 Spring Street.
Constable Polatano?
The gentleman is in the audience just, and I have a letter that I, that is on your desk also from him.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, I've, I've read the statement of what the use is. I've also read the review from Planning Development. You know, I have some concerns. First of all, I don't have a problem with vehicles being parked for services. I mean, as long as it's a paved parking lot, that's fine. But then it gets a little muddled after that. Church passenger transportation vehicles, how many? How, how long will they sit? Where will they be parked? Unregistered commercial vehicles for overseas donations. This is, excuse me? Thank you. You know, this is something that, again, what's the control? How many vehicles? How long will they sit? At what point will they be moved? There's the potential for something for this to fester. And although I, I don't doubt the intentions of, of the, of the minister, the thing is that we're trying to clean up these type of situations from our city, not, not, not create them. And the purpose of a, of an open-air lot, I'm not so sure that I'm comfortable that this fits the, this totally fits the situation here. You know, we're trying to develop that area. You know, the, the administration has a, has a vision for, for down Second Street. This is an offshoot of Second Street. We know we have other issues down there. So, there's going to be a lot of work being done there. I don't know, so I'm not comfortable with supporting this. And as a, as a long-term resident in that area over 60 years, I, I just, I just not comfortable with anything I'm reading here. I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, counsel. Constable Florio?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the committee had a lot of questions on this, and we do have a lot of questions. I mean, we could put conditions. We still want to hear from the minister. We definitely don't want to shut things down that we don't have answers to. So, my recommendation, this goes back to committee and have the minister come up to our committee meetings because we have numerous questions, and this is not the place to do it. So, I will put that in the form of a motion to send it back to Business and Community Development and invite the minister to come up.
Second.
Second? On the motion? Constable Hanlon?
The minister didn't come up. We had many questions, and the minister was not there to answer them. So, this, so we're going to re-invite him to the Committee on Community and Business Development because we have a lot of stuff on the agenda tonight, and our meetings are already going far beyond of what they should be. So, we'd be more than glad to ask all the questions and give the minister the benefit of the doubt. Maybe we can, we help him out with some things that we can't help him out on others. Maybe we can help him with people just parking there and not have work being done in open year. So, the motion is to send it to the Business and Community Development.
On seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it?
So, the other items we have are some ordinances, items 10, 11, 14, and 15. Some orders and ordinances. 10, 11, 14, 15. I'm sorry. Yeah, you can, yeah, you can do them separately. I just want...
So, make a motion to...
10 and 11, you could probably take collectively because they're almost the same.
Take item 10 collectively.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Items number 10 and 11.
Read number 10, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Item number 10 is an order offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Junior as president in order to accept MGL Chapter 64G, Section 3DA as follows. Imposing upon an operator a community impact fee of not more than 3% of the total amount of rent for each transfer of occupancy of a professionally managed unit that is located within the city of Everett. Item 11 is an order offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Junior as president in order to accept MGL Chapter 64G, Section 3DB as follows. Imposing upon an operator a community impact fee of not more than 3% of the total amount of rent for each transfer of occupancy of a short-term rental unit that is located within a two- or three-family dwelling unit that includes the operator's primary residence in the city of Everett. Again, this is Committee on Business and Development report.
Const...
I was grabbing it right now, Mr. President.
He's reading it right now.
Sorry. So... Item number 10, the report is, Mr. Latanzi provided a brief overview of MGL Act related to short-term rentals. He reminded the committee that the city council had passed an ordinance back in February that, that would regulate short-term housing in the city of Everett, which would also require that a 6% motel hotel room, rooming tax be applied to these rentals. He noted that this new state act, if adopted, would allow the city of Everett to collect an additional 3% impact fee that would be placed by the city in a revolving-type fund to be utilized for affordable housing projects with the funds being allocated upon city council approval. He explained that this act was passed by the state legislature due to short-term rentals taking away vital community housing with new fee, helping to offset the housing loss by providing affordable housing opportunities. Mr. Cornelio informed the committee that there were approximately 100 short-term rentals listed in the city of Everett that rent units for less than 31 days via a reservation through a booking agent. Mr. Flood advised the committee that the City Council would need to accept the proposed act by May thirty-first in order to take, to, for it to take effect by July first. Committee recommended favorable action.
Okay, three speakers. Counselor Florio?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something that we are, we do have to do. I don't know if people realize, but we have a ton of Airbnbs in Everett, a lot, from what I'm, from what I'm understanding. And first of all, it's not even only about the money, but they should be regulated based on enforcement, uh, smoke detectors, whatever. This is pretty dangerous. So, and with everything going on, with the growth coming, with the casino coming, and the hotel comes, a lot, a lot of people are using Airbnbs because it's cheaper. They can go out and spend a hundred dollars instead of four hundred for, uh, for a room, or five hundred for, for a room. So we know that this is going to be, uh, something that we definitely need. So I am recommending favorable action. The only issue that I have... Short-term, Airbnb, yeah. Short-term Airbnb. That's, my, my thinking is, we have to figure out how it's going to be enforced.
Correct, yeah. So just briefly, we passed the ordinance. This is a, this is a acceptance of a state law which is in a special act and it should be codified in a state law any day now, I would hope. Mr. Latanzi is here in case you have any further questions. He definitely is more apt than me to answer, but it, the, these are community mitigation fees. We get the six percent room tax. This is an additional three percent. Not only do we have to accept this, either in this vote or in a separate vote, we have to accept, or the City Council has to accept, how much of the three percent they would like to go to affordable housing or infrastructure improvements. So it's just a mayor's recommendation that it was at three percent and that we used the, the end. It is actually a City Council vote and then sign off, like we all do all the orders. It comes to you first. So it, you'll decide if you want to give the whole three percent back to affordable housing, or you have to use at least thirty-three, uh, a third of this mon, of the three percent has to go back to either affordable or, or infrastructure improvements. The recommendation from the, the administration is to put it all back because you're going to get the six percent room fee anyway. That will go back to general fund. This was to help offset the, the people living in, you know, staying in these rentals and not having as much affordable housing. So that was, I think, the idea. Again, I don't want to speak fully on the city's administration, but from the, what I spoke to Mr. Latanzi and other members of the administration. Mr. Latanzi is here if you want further explanation. But that's the general gist of why they did it. I just wanted, not everybody was at the committee, so I just wanted to give a brief overview.
Right. I just got a conf, I got, I made it a little confusing, I apologize for that.
That's okay, that's, I just wanted to...
Because I know it has a lot to do with short-term memory and it's got to do with the Airbnbs also. So this is, this is a good piece, it's not bad, but, uh, I still, you know, when we get to that point, I still want to see how they're going to enforce it, that's all. But anyways, I, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. I have Counselor McLaughlin and Counselor Marchesi.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, a couple of my questions. How is it enforceable? Who, who enforces it? And where did the three percent number come from? And have there been any studies or charts done for, for comparison? For comparison of what this impact would be on our city as if it was implemented today? So I'm just wondering if we have any of those answers.
Would you like to invite?
Can I ask Mr. Latanzi?
Absolutely, sure, absolutely.
General information.
Make a motion and invite up, uh, Mr. Latanzi.
Seconded. All in favor? The ayes have it. Just take your name.
Thank you, Counselors. My name is Matthew Latanzi, Assistant City Solicitor. So, Councilman McLaughlin, I'm unaware of any studies. What you have to understand is, in Massachusetts anyway, this is a brand-new law. Uh, just got rolled out in late November, early December of two thousand eighteen. So, you know, to have an impact study would be pretty difficult to do with that, you know, between then and now. And I'm sorry, could you repeat your other two questions?
So really, I was just wondering, A, how it's enforced and who would, who would enforce it? B, where the three percent number came from? And then C, just not a real state, but just if it was implement, if it was in place today, what a number would look like, a, a growth number would look like if it was in place today for the number of Airbnb short-term rentals that we have in the city?
Yep. So as for where this number came from, the state allows, in addition to our six percent occupancy fee that we've already put into the statute that passed, we are allowed by state between one and three percent additional to tax. So three is the maximum, it's the roof. And this was the number that, when speaking with the administration, they felt most happy with, so that's what we wrote in. So three percent is the maximum. And then, as City Clerk Cornelio brought up, of that three percent, thirty-five percent of that has to be dedicated to affordable housing and/or infrastructure. The remaining sixty-five percent can be allocated anywhere. Uh, it would be going into a general fund. I actually have a good piece of literature on it that I can send to anyone who has questions. It's, uh, frequently asked questions that the state answered a few of the questions that are presented today. Oh, do you? Okay. So, yes, and as for the numbers, I believe maybe Clerk Cornelio can shed some light on it. What were the amounts of Airbnbs and short-term rentals that we had found online prior?
Uh, just, just a quick search, got us a hundred hits. But that's just on the Airbnb website. I mean, there are other short-term rentals. We, we're talking well over a hundred, um, Airbnbs are currently being rented in the community. So this is, this was really why they went, the administration looked at the three percent because of how many already are there. We haven't even seen them, the, the brunt of it because the casino hasn't opened yet. And if you look online, they're already mentioned in the, the resort, um, how it will be an alternative option, um, in many of those posts. So that, that's, that's why this came about and when, you know, and due diligence on the administration, looking at the, over the act and some help from our consultant, um, we found a lot of this information and we wanted to be proactive and move forward quickly. Again, I just want to inform you that, you know, it's not rushed. We did bring, send it to you a couple of weeks, you know, over a month ago. But if we don't accept it by this meeting, we can accept it later, but we cannot impose this fee until, um, months from now because there, there's a cutoff in, in the law, it tells you exactly these dates. So that's why I wanted to make sure it was back on the agenda as quickly as we can. And you guys had some information. It did come out favorably from the administration, um, excuse me, from the committee.
So to you, Mr. Clerk, or to Mr. Latanzi? Who's going to enforce the three, who's going to enforce that we're receiving the three percent?
Well, so, I, I can handle that. So the enforcement as to, just directly, um, the operator of the Airbnb, so the owner or oftentimes the agent who is working through the owner of the building being used as an Airbnb, they, uh, by law have to report all revenue brought in from their short-term rentals to, uh, to the state, so to the DOR. And then quarterly, the DOR will pay the municipality. So four times a year, we'll be getting, uh, both our excise tax, the local excise tax of six percent, and the community impact fee. They'll be paid separately but by the same entity directly to the municipality. So we will not be dealing with individual operators. The state will handle the individual operators. We simply have to deal with the state.
So we have no direct involvement with the individual operators of the Airbnbs?
We have direct involvement with them, simply not for the payment of their taxes.
On this part.
For the payment of their taxes, such as the community impact fee, we have no involvement with the individual operator. Uh, any violation that they incur will come, or a, any enforcement of that will happen from the state level.
And are they, are they licensed throughout our city?
Excuse me?
Are, are short-terms and Airbnb's licensed with our city?
Uh, they, so this, uh, the statute that we have been looking at and has been talked about, uh, we now have a, we now do license the short-term Airbnbs or short-term rentals slash Airbnbs. Uh, City Clerk Cornelio can maybe shed some light on how many applications have come in.
So that's, the question is...
I've, I've issued four applications. I have not received any back.
So then they kind of...
But we, we know the, where they are. Clerk, Assistant Clerk Ragucci is, is heading the task on trying to find them when he, and, and, and the ones that we do know of, he has issued the, the, um, applications, has sent, uh, second notices, and if they, uh, will be going out inspecting them very shortly, and if they are in operation and without a license, especially the ones that we've informed, they will be issued a cease and desist order from my office. Others, and we are in the process now with the administration to hold a ECTV programming. We're going to be putting it out on, on the website and in the newspaper informing people, these are the new laws. Please make sure that you are licensed properly by the, the, the Office of the City Clerk, that you have all the proper licensing and insurances. So we are doing outreach right now, uh, in the, in the next week or two. We'll have that drafted and, and put into the papers, put online, and informing people. They'll have X amount of days to come in. Don't forget also that we have a, a co-enforcement task force and co-enforcement team that has been going out, um, finding some of them for us, you know, accidentally, and they have been giving them applications and informing us of the locations. So between both mediums, we, we are getting there. It's, it's a slow process. No one's had the licensing before. Um, it's, you know, it's very new to our state, so we're, we're trying to move forward as proactively as we can.
And that, and that's all great news, but if we're finding a hundred hits on, online for Airbnbs in the city and we only have four of them registered?
But I, they don't give you addresses.
No, my question is, is the hundred of them grandfathered in before...
No, no, there's no grandfather law here. There, there's no grandfather.
So that we need to identify the one hundred?
They have to be licensed. If I find them without a license, they'll be informed at the beginning first to get licenses. If they haven't, then, uh, if they don't come in in a timely manner, I will issue, issue cease and desist orders, fines, et cetera, in accordance with mass general law and our city ordinances, as I do with any of our licensees.
Thank you for your work on this.
Thanks, Latanzi.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Do you have any questions for our guest?
Yeah, what's the definition of short-term?
Anything, uh, any rental under thirty-one days.
And less than thirty-one days?
Yes. So it's, it's similar to like a hotel motel type.
So the person registers, uh, a lady has a single family house and she needs extra money, she rents a room out?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
She can do that.
She has to pay nine percent?
The six percent is already in, in effect.
Six percent's in effect and the city wants to add another three percent on?
The three percent would be going, yeah, it, it, so again, it, like they do with the hotels, that's an ad, they, they know how much they want to make. They had to charge a hundred and five dollars for the room, that's what they need to make, and then they add the nine percent on at the end. Just like, similar to the hotel, you see it in a broken, broken-down hotels. They know they're going to make X amount of dollars and then they have to pay the taxes. So it's a, a separate tax. It go, all it does is goes on to the rental.
Say they want to rent the place for thirty-two days, they have to pay the six percent?
It, it would not qualify.
Would not qualify.
Qualify. Okay, that's what I'm just trying to figure.
Correct. Yeah, once it's month-to-month, then it's a, you're a regular rental.
So now the halfway houses in the city, do they pay that?
So you have to remember, the law is very specific. Rentals through a booking agent, not personal. So you, you're through a company similar to, and we use Airbnb because that's the big, one of the largest companies.
What if someone uses Airbnb and they just put it out on the bike Airbnb?
Well, we would, we would, we wouldn't know. So if they're not a registered booking agent, then we wouldn't know, they wouldn't be qualifying under this.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, Counselor Capone?
I think you just stepped out for a moment.
All right. Well, any more questions for our guest?
May I just, uh, add a comment? So, uh, I know Clerk Cornelio alluded to it earlier. The, today is, i- i- if voted positively today, this goes into effect July first, two thousand nineteen. If it is not voted in today, May thirty-first is the last day for an acceptance vote for this calendar quarter. What that means is if June first or any subsequent date until September first, so between June first and September first, if that's when a positive vote happened, it would go into effect October first. So the effect date, uh, is quarterly. And also, in addition to a vote to accept the three percent local exci, or, uh, community impact fee, in addition to that vote, you may also, uh, want to specify exactly how much of this three percent is going to be dedicated toward, uh, local infrastructure and/or affordable housing. It's by a separate vote, and again, the minimum is thirty-five percent of the three percent have to be dedicated. You can dedicate up to a hundred percent, but you should specify, uh, how much of that three percent does get dedicated toward it. If it's, any remainder that is not specifically dedicated will go into a general fund.
Okay, if there's no more questions?
I'd like to excuse our guest.
Thank you very much. Seconded. All in favor?
Favorable action on item number ten.
Second motion.
Roll call vote.
Counselor de Florio?
Yes.
Counselor De Perro?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes. Eleven and twelve.
That would be, sorry, nine ayes, no nays. You have so passed the order, um, and item, item number eleven, which...
Favorable action, Mr. President?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Before, before we do that, can we, can we retake that back so that way you, during the, during the vote, I, if you could make a motion on deciding how, what the percentages also that you'd like to accept. So can you reconsider this? I'm sorry, that was a motion.
Consider item number ten.
On the motion, Counselor Perro?
If we can vote on the reconsideration first and if I could speak.
So I'll make a motion to reconsider item number ten.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor?
On, on reconsideration, so, uh, this is where you're, you're going to make the decision, would you like to go with what the administration said and use all three percent, goes back to housing and/or infrastructure, or would you like to only give the thirty-five percent or any number up, above that? You have to give thirty-five percent minimum. The, the administration asked that you give all three percent because the other six percent from the, the hotel will go back to our general fund anyway, and this would really help mitigate, um, the infrastructure repairs and stuff.
So favorable action on the order with the three percent?
Using the whole three percent for...
Using the whole three percent.
Uh, for, that's...
For housing?
For, for, yes, for housing and, and infrastructure repairs.
Now, seconded.
Counselor Perro, you have on the motion?
Yep, we need to do another roll call. I'm just writing the, um, the entire... Takes me a minute to write, sorry. So it's favorable action with the entire three percent going back to, um, housing and, and infrastructure repairs. Again, roll call vote. Counselor de Florio?
Yes.
Counselor De Perro?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin? Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
So it's nine ayes, zero nays with the amendment.
Favorable action on number eleven.
And it will be the same motion? Yeah, with the three percent, same reason.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a roll call, Mr. President.
Is it number eleven?
Yep. Counselor de Florio?
Yes.
Counselor De Perro?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order as amended with the three percent. The, do I have any other? Yes, we have, um... That's what, that's what I was going to state. There is one person here for a license, um, he, his is a, a quick, a quick one, and then I would say that we should take, um, the CFO. Uh, item for the license is number... Three is for the gentleman in the audience.
Are we doing?
Yep.
What number are we on?
Item number three.
So make a motion to take item number three.
Second motion.
Second. All in favor? Take, read, please.
Well, other papers in order?
Yes, do you want me to read it first, Mr.?
Yeah.
Marchesi?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number three is a petition offered by Councilor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as, as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves the motor vehicle DRL license for Eastern Auto Sales, Inc. at seven twenty-five Broadway. All papers are in order. Fees have been paid. Everything else is...
Move for favorable action.
Second motion.
Second. Roll call vote?
Yes. Counselor de Florio?
Yes.
Counselor De Perro?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marchese.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
And President Delisola.
Yes.
Nine yays, zero nays, you have passed, uh, noon on Thursday or later, you can come and receive your license. Thank you.
Welcome.
And then, uh, the only other person I definitely know that is here is Mister, uh, Demus, here for item number seven.
Make a motion to take item number seven.
Second emotion.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye, have it. Give me number seven, the agenda, please.
This is just the communication, uh, that item number seven, that the CFO make a presentation and a brief report on 121A agreement between Encore Resorts and the city of Everett.
Just, just take your name and your position for the record, please.
Good evening. Eric, Eric Demus, CFO, and with me I have, uh, Attorney Lee Smith from KP Law, who's been assisting the city, um, throughout these matters in case you have any legal questions.
Just have him turn his mic on, just in case. Thank you. Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Mister President, to our invited guests. Uh, could we have a brief overview of this?
Certainly. So as you're aware, April 13, uh, the city entered into a host community agreement with Wynn Resorts at the time, now it's Encore. Um, the host community agreement, um, covers all the impact fees from the casino, um, made to the city in lieu of taxes. Uh, for the first three years, um, prior to the opening, the city received, um, impact payments, $5 million, um, 12.5 million, and just this year, we received our final $12.5 million. Um, also, the community host agreement, um, calls for a community impact fee to be paid, um, each year upon opening of $5 million in pilot payments of 20 million, um, or payment in lieu of taxes. Um, each of those payments increases, um, with an annual escalator by two and a half percent.
Is that 20? Is that the second figure?
Twenty. So in, in, in total, it'll be 25 million, um, for fiscal year 20. And then, it will have an annual escal- escalator of two and a half percent, um, thereafter as they remain open.
Two and a half?
Two and a half percent per year.
Can I just ask one quick question? I don't wanna interrupt them.
I'll, I'll yield. I'll yield.
Are you...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Marchese.
There are, um, there has been an arrangement made between Encore Resorts and the city.
Um, the parking garage, or, or, actually, it's not a garage, the parking lot, um, that they're constructing, um, right there at the resort, um, they're completing the construction. It's literally gonna be a turnkey operation in which the city is going to be managing that parking lot for the three-year duration. The city gets to keep, um, the revenues generated, um, from that, uh, from that parking lot. And you'll see next month in, or, um, a request, um, for the city to take action, um, in regards to those funds.
So the taxes are gonna be washed with the guy who owns that property?
Uh, that property is covered underneath the original parcel of the community host agreement, I believe.
It's also partially city-owned.
And, and it's also partially city-owned.
The property that was allocated by Wynn outside of the parking is all under a $20 million, uh, pilot?
No, any, any properties that are outside...
Yes.
Of the predefined area, um, we tax on.
No, so anything that's across the street, that's what's all, that's what I'm saying.
And part of that, uh, piece of property is city-owned.
Part of the city-owned?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll be getting taxed on land, and we'll be receiving fees for the parking?
We will be receiving all of the fees for that parking lot.
But will you be paying people who work down there?
Uh, as of right now, the city, uh, just entered into, and I believe they executed the agreement today, um, with a company called Pro Park, um, that will be managing, um, that parking lot. They're a professional parking lot management company. Um, we've tailored down the scope and what they're gonna provide. Um, in addition, we also put into the contract a three, a three-month review, a six-month review, um, and it's only a one-year contract. Um, you know, as you were discussing the parking issues earlier, um, today, you know, that first window, first one month, two months, three months, um, is gonna be quite hectic, but then after that, let's see where we are. So the thought wasn't to, um, enter into any real long-term agreements until we can make a determination as to what we actually need and what we can actually staff in-house. But just to ensure that there are, were no, uh, that we had professionals in there that are used to running these types of facilities, um, gonna be staffing it 24/7, um, we move forward with that company.
Thank you very much.
Just for my colleagues, this is an informational piece. June 4th, they'll be coming in front of us again for our questions, so, yes.
Yeah, so for the purposes, if, if, if I may, thank you.
Good.
Really, the reason why we wanted to get up here today is to just lay some groundwork, remind everybody about the terms of the host community agreement, um, and allow you to digest the information, the very limited information that we're gonna provide, to help better formulate your questions for next week. But it's just a refresher as to what the process is.
You have more information or?
Uh, well, I do, I didn't know if...
I, I just, Counsel, I'll leave you your, your time, but let them do their whole, uh, presentation there, and then you can ask your questions after that, even though we're having a meeting on June 4th.
Well, actually, Mister President...
Good.
Are you yielding?
Good, go ahead, Counsel.
Uh, what I, what I was gonna say is, we have, I have a piece on tonight with, uh, other, another sponsor in regards to this, so we can just hold that over to that, I mean, it's number 22 for tonight, uh, Mister Demus. And it's new business, we'll, we'll hold it over to the, um, the 4th, or whatever that's gonna be that night, but those are some of the questions that I have. I put them, my resolutions, as well as, uh, Mister Matuski's resolution, is basically, we put down what we want and then give you a hint of what's happening with it, so hopefully some of these questions can be, uh, addressed at that meeting then.
Well, I actually wasn't up here to discuss parking, what I was up here to discuss was the 121A agreement and that process.
Yeah, that's fine. So, uh, that, we can hold off till that meeting.
Okay.
And then what I'm gonna do is request that, that, uh, be held over to that meeting, that you're gonna be there anyway.
Certainly.
Um, just the 121. Uh, what other taxation are we gonna be getting from down there, as well as the, uh, the $5 million, the 20 million, and, uh, the two and a half per year? Is there gonna be, um, beverage tax?
Local meals?
In...
Yes. Hotel, as well, excise.
And excise, okay, so what are those percentage rates, do we know?
Right now, um, I've been working with their group on what their estimates are to be, and the percentages are about 6%.
That's cool.
However, based upon their projections, and I'm working with updated projections and, and how we're working it out with the state, but at a minimum conservatively, we're estimating at a minimum of $6 million in additional excise revenue.
So that's just excise?
That's just excise, which, um, maybe as high as $10 to $12 million a year. Um, but given the uncertainty, um, with the newness of it, um, we're certainly gonna be going conservative. Um, you know, they were actually talking about delaying a couple of weeks ago, so, um, I wasn't too certain when they're opening, so we're still working on that. What we're gonna be able to do prior to setting the tax rate is we're gonna have about three months' worth of data...
Mm-hmm.
From them operating, um, you know, a portion of June, July, August, and September, so we can see exactly where their projections, um, are following with actual activity.
What are we looking at for meal and, uh, beverage and, um, room tax?
Until I have additional information and I can see as to how their bookings are, um, how far their bookings are out, what their activity is, right now, I think very conservatively, we're looking at an additional $6 million next year.
So that's on...
Above the payments.
That's on top of the excise?
Yes.
As well, and everything else included, okay.
How's that, Counsel?
Thank you.
I'd like to let them do their presentation, please, and then they may answer your questions.
It shouldn't be no longer than another 45 minutes to an hour.
I just have one quick question.
Oh, great.
No, because he said it was 20 plus 5. My understanding is it was 30 million altogether.
Well, the presentation may tell you that.
Right, but I want him to correct it, if that's...
Okay, so, prior to the opening, um, it was a total of $30 million prior to opening. So we just received 12 and a half million last year was the 12 and a half million prior to that.
No, I understand, but I thought it was 30 million every year plus two and a half percent, so you're saying it's a total of 25 million?
It is a total of 25 plus the excise and everything else, yes.
So I just wanna clarify it, but...
So there was, as I was saying, there's 5 million annually in a commu-, um, community enhancement fee, um, as well as 20 million, um, as a pilot payment. MGL 121A, as we're discussing, um, is what allows that pilot payment to be made, or that payment in lieu of taxes. Um, the 121A agreement, um, is, as determined by statute, is for 15 years, and I just wanted to bring you through tonight a brief summary of the approval process, in case you had any questions. If I can't answer them, um, Attorney Smith is here. If he can't answer them, at least we'll be better prepared for our meeting next week, um, for the public hearing next week. So if, between now and then, additional questions pop up, um, we wanna make sure we're being fully transparent and giving everybody the opportunity to make sure that any questions, comments, concerns, um, we're gonna be able to address. So, just walking through the application process, um, the mayor first transmits the application to the planning board and city council. Um, city council and planning board will hold a joint, um, public hearing within 45 days, as of right now, that's scheduled for June 6th, um, actually, June 4th. It needs to be held by June 16th. Um, right now, it's scheduled for June 4th, um, at 6:00 PM. After that joint hearing, the planning board delivers a report with its findings, um, to the city council, and the city council will deliver that report with its findings to the mayor. Uh, the report, uh, addresses compliance of the factual elements of the project, um, within the requirements of, uh, chapter 121A. All reports then, are then transmitted to, uh, DHCD, um, the Department of Housing and, um, Community Development, which then will either approve or disprove, uh, dis, uh, the 121A application. Once it's approved, the payment in lieu of taxes and other payments, um, underneath, uh, the 121A agreement will become, will start to happen pursuant to that agreement. And those quarterly payments will start being made by, um, by the resort. So, this is more of a procedural item, given the fact that the community host agreement that the community, that the city has already executed, just needs to fall under a specific statute, and in this case, it falls underneath, uh, 121A. So we have to go through these procedural hoops to satisfy the state. And based upon that, I'm concluding my presentation. Do you have any questions?
I, uh... If I could make a recommendation, Madam Chairman?
I have, uh, Counselor DePiero that has a question.
This, this is a communication, I think there are several items on the agenda somewhat related to this, I know the counsel from Ward 6 has something similar, and the gentleman from Ward 1 and 4. If we could perhaps gather our questions over the next few days and submit them, uh, you know, we're two hours into this meeting with no end in sight, we gotta have some kind of structure here with how we're going on about our business, or else we'll be here to day's end, every meeting.
I agree with you, Counsel.
That's my recommendation, to accept the report and refer, accept the communication, I mean.
We're gonna refer it to the June, June 4th meeting?
Yes.
I, Counselor McGlaughlin, did, I have a second, but Counselor, we all set. So the motion is to refer it to the June 4th meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, excuse with the customer.
Thank you for that information.
Thanks, thank you, gentlemen, for the information.
Thank you.
You're welcome, nice to see you.
Motion to take item number 22, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the clerk will please read item number 22.
Excuse me, item number 22, Miss, Madam Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon and Wayne A. Matuski, that the, at the administration and a member of the Encore, come before the council to explain how the parking lot across from Encore on Route 99 will be cha-, charging cars by hour, how much per hour, and where will the monies from the parking be going to be designated? Please provide a breakdown.
Counselor McKinnon?
Nope, this would be, it goes to our regular meeting on June 10th? Yep, that would be the meeting that we...
So the motion is to refer it to the June 10th meeting, do I have a, a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, item 22, uh, will, um, be referred to item, item 22 will be referred to the June 10th meeting.
Motion.
Counselor, um, Matuski, I'm sorry.
I have seen our own casino, which is, I just wanna take your item 22.
I have a motion to take item 23, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, clerk, please read item number 23.
Madam Chairperson, uh, this is a resolution offered by Counselor Wayne A. Matuski, John Leo McKinnon, Michael Marchese, and Stephen Seminelli, that the Encore Resorts consider installing a citizens complaint hotline for issues that may arise within the host city of Everett.
Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I discussed this briefly with, uh, Mister Fark and Mister Tocco. Um, I believe we need a exclusive line for complaints concerning any issues that might arise, especially in the first year. Uh, if anybody wants to be added to this piece, I'll put their name on it. Counselor McGlaughlin indicated he would like to, Counselor Man... I really like to make it unanimous, Counselor Man DePiero, uh, uh, and Counselor Man Hanlon would like to be added to it, Counselor Rosa DeFlorio, so we're almost unanimous here. I can see where, you know, we're gonna get an increase in calls, and I don't mind, that's what we're here for, but, you know, as you heard, I don't want, I want the line, even if it's a tape-recorded line, "You've reached Encore complaint line, we will address your concerns." It's not a big deal, this is a $3 billion project. I'm not asking for the moon here. And that's, and, and as a matter of fact, on the way out, uh, there were several people that thought my conversation with these two gentlemen was humorous. Counselor Man McKinnon saw, we face this way, so we can actually see, I'm not up here for a joke, okay? I want a complaint line, and I want it advertised in the newspapers for the residents of the host community. We are the host community. We are the city fathers, and in your case, mother. So with that, I would wanna refer this to Mister DeSalvo. Uh, I think he'll take it a little, Mister Fark agreed with me, you heard him. You know, this is a simple request, this is what I mean, uh, you know, I don't ask for much, okay? I want a complaint line to exclusively deal with issues, even if it's recorded, and I'll bring up the Mass Board issue at the la-, at the next meeting, 'cause we had a rough Sunday.
Counselor, uh, Matuski, the only thing is, we are, one of the councils is not here.
Why, we can, uh, the clerk can add their name if they choose to, uh...
Okay.
I added separately. Excuse me? I added each name separately.
Oh, thank you.
Because I didn't write everyone, just 'cause they're not here.
Well, the four sponsors and, uh, now, it's pretty much unanimous. Counselor Capone, I think, uh, would agree to it, but it would be nice if it's unanimous, and I'm only doing this for our benefit.
What I'm saying is, maybe the city clerk could call him, uh, I...
Yeah, that's right.
I don't know if he's in the building still, but, you know...
I believe he had an emergency, so...
On behalf of, uh, this resolution and the sponsors and, uh, and the membership that agrees with us on this, I wanna thank you, I think it's a serious thing, at least the first year. Hopefully, we have no problems, I'm a, you know, I want this thing to be a success, okay? Sunday and Monday were the first two days in four years that you were able to drive down Lower Broadway. Number one, the bridge is completed, that, after seven years. It took longer to fix that bridge than it did to build a casino. Pretty embarrassing. But anyway, I wanna thank my colleagues, I take this issue seriously, where, you know, I, I'm 61 today, as a matter of fact.
Oh, happy birthday, Counsel.
Happy birthday, Counsel. Thank you, so I'm not getting any younger, but, you know, I still get some, uh, juice left, but...
We would give you a citation, but we cut the...
I don't, I don't mind getting complaints, but I don't wanna get bombed, you know what I mean? So at any rate, uh...
Second the counsel's motion.
Thank you, Counselor Man DePiero, this is gonna go to Mister DeSalvo for an exclusive hotline and complaint line.
So I have a motion, and I do have a second, to refer this to Mister DeSalvo with an exclusive, uh, hotline, uh, that we can call. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Can we take a motion, take item number 21 off the calendar, please?
Make a motion, uh, take item 21, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, clerk, please, please read item number 21.
Madam Chairperson, item number 21 is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael J. McGlaughlin, that is, honor the mayor and the representative from Encore appear at the next government operations, public safety meeting, to discuss if there is a reopening clause in the host agreement between the city and Encore.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairwoman, if you go back in history with these, uh, host community agreements, not this company, but many others that have opened up, uh, casino resorts, they will, uh, after the first year, realize that their projections aren't as high as they had hoped, or their numbers and goals weren't met at what they hoped they would be, and they come back to the host community and try to renegotiate their numbers down. Um, I'm not sure, I'm sure Encore, Wynn probably is not in that boat, but I'd like to see what protections we have in place, um, so that if there is a reopening clause, what it looks like and what it entails for our community, and how the process would work if they were to appear before the city. As we know, they have been hit with the, uh, most historical fines in the past several months, um, in the casino industry's business, um, and I'm sure that's gonna at some point have some sort of an impact on something. Um, so I'd like to ask the mayor to come, maybe on that June 4th meeting, it'd be more than appropriate to discuss this with the city council and to explain to us what, if any, measures are in place in the host community agreement for an open reopening clause, and what the process looks like, if so. So make a motion that we refer this to June 4th meeting, and invite Mayor DiMarie to discuss this with us.
Uh, Counsel, I just want you to know that the host agreement is online, in case anybody wants, not, in case anybody wants to look at it, because a lot of people from the outside have been asking questions, so they are able to read the host agreement online. But we can refer this to the June 4th meeting and to have, who did you want to invite?
I want to have the mayor himself, because he's the one that signed the agreement with Encore, with Wind Resorts back in 2013. So I'd like to have the mayor here himself to explain what he did sign, and if there is any, any measures in place. So he's the one that signed the agreement.
Okay. So the motion is to refer this to the June 4th meeting and invite the mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to, with rules, take item number 18.
Second the motion?
Make a motion to take item 18. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Got to read the piece first. No problem.
Clerk, please read item number 18.
Number 18, please.
Mr. President, item number 18 is a resolution offered by Counselor P. A. Napolitano that the city solicitor provided ruling on any measures of state law restrictions or limitations, if any, imposed on Everett elected officials utilizing Encore Boston Harbor Casino once opened.
Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you. Could we ask the city solicitor to come before us?
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Even though we all know who you are, just state your name, please.
Good evening, Colleen Mejia, city solicitor.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for the, for the report from KP Law. Can you, so for the public understanding, can you give us a brief summary of what you supplied us with?
I actually didn't have a chance to get to my office at all today, to even, I read it on my computer on email, but I haven't been back to print it. I forwarded it to Mike Mannion to send to you, so can I take a quick?
We have copies.
So there were, I think there are two events that you, as members of the city council, in your capacity as a city council, are invited to. One are the, what they're calling play days, and the other is the grand opening. And Brian Riley, who was, represents the city in outside council at KP Law, they are experts in gaming, and, and so he provided this, this opinion to you, to you as a city council, on your ethics responsibilities and rights. So you're invited to play days, and you're invited to the, the grand opening. And you can declare those events as a legitimate public purpose, for you to be able to benefit from attending the gala and the, I mean, the play days and the, and the grand opening ribbon cutting. You are all invited as members of the city council, as, in your capacity as a city council member. So, and because of that, because of your public official capacity, you would have to fill out a, which I think was provided in the opinion too, a disclosure form, which declares that you, that there is no appearance of a conflict that you can attend, because it's a legitimate public purpose. And he cites one of the legitimate public purposes as, let me just quickly find it.
Means our ability to promote the city?
Yep, to promote the city, to promote tourism, economic development, charitable, public health, environmental, and educational goals, and also to be informed of all of the operations of the, of the casino resort, so you can relay that information to constituents when they call upon you for information. So you are, you could accept the free food and drink that they would provide, and if it's going to be over $50, you have to fill out the disclosure form and declare the amount in which you are going to accept over the $50.
And this is different for, when I, with us appearing during these particular events, as opposed to a month later, us going down there as a private citizen?
Correct.
I believe I read that in the report.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So do you know when the disclosures will be available to us, or is that going to be through the clerk?
It's, you actually, it was attached to the form.
I think that was a sample.
Yep, and then.
No, this is the form. This is the actual form.
That's the official form. And if you remember, I was going to draft something and ask you, Colleen, to have a template one, so that way, all 11 were going to have the same language.
Sure.
So I was just waiting for the letter to be done.
Yeah, I'll work on it tomorrow.
And then I was going to type them in for them, fill it in, and all they had to do was sign it. That way, everyone was exactly the same, because they all have the same conflict.
Exactly, yeah, absolutely. I'll do that tomorrow.
Yeah, well, yeah, we was going to work together. Thank you.
All right. I actually have a little further questions. I just wanted to make sure that we had, that we got some clarifications before, you know, any of us potentially put ourselves in an awkward position. So I want to thank you for researching this and providing us with the information. I'll step back for any of the members.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the information that was sent today to Seehaw. And I'm glad Counselor Napolitano actually asked, because, you know, you hear different things. My question is, if I had a relative working for the casino as a city councilman, is that an appearance of a conflict of interest if I was to vote, say, on anything that they, you know, that would benefit them in any way, you know, or a tax incentive? I don't know. But you probably know more than I do on this issue.
If it's an immediate family member, and that immediate family member would benefit financially from the specific vote, then you should recuse yourself. If it's not an immediate family member, then.
Well, I don't even know if that's the case yet, but I'm just saying in the future.
Yeah.
Does that go for every agency? I mean, every department, say, the school department, for instance?
Yes. So if you're voting specifically on, not the bottom line, say, the budget, not the bottom line budget, but as.
An additional.
Appropriation.
Appropriation.
Yeah.
That would.
It could. If the, if that particular additional appropriation was going to financially benefit the immediate family member, then you could, you should recuse yourself. I always would advise you or whatever individual comes to me with that question to run it by state ethics. They're quick to return an opinion, and their opinion is the official opinion.
Because it seems to me that, not saying now, but in the past, there's an appearance of a conflict of interest. I mean, you pay a price. Say I had a relative working for a certain, whatever it may be. I may not be able to vote for that certain item, right?
You may, and you may not. It depends on the family member.
A budget thing is, is one big draft, but I'm talking about expenditures and so forth, whatever it may be. I just, I'm curious. There are members here that will walk out because their wife's on a, on a library board. There's another member here that will walk out because her husband is employed by a certain department. Why is it not good for everybody? I don't get that.
Counselor, is there a, excuse me, is there a point here? I'm following you here.
The point is, I believe there's some conflicts of interest, and I just want to clear it up. And if there's not, there's not. But, you know, it's a case-by-case issue. I mean, I'm just saying.
It's exactly what it is. It's.
Yeah, I am making a statement here. If you have a relative working for the school department, and you're voting for money, like they did last year, I think it's a conflict. I really do. And you shouldn't vote on it. That's what I'm saying.
They're, it's, they're all taken on a case-by-case basis, because you don't know.
Aren't you supposed to say, I'd like to excuse myself, there appears to be an appearance of a conflict of interest, if there is?
Um.
I mean, I want to get to the bottom of this once and for all, because you can't just hold up a paper, "I got clearance from the state ethics." I want to see it, that, you know, I'm going back 10 years ago on that. So it's nothing to do with anybody appearing.
The opinions given to the employee or the, well, you would be considered a public employee, even as an elected official. The opinion that you get from state ethics is confidential between you and state ethics, and it would be, only you would be able to share it. State ethics cannot, cannot share. I can't call state ethics on behalf of somebody else. They won't give me an opinion, say, on your behalf.
So after.
Unless you waive that in writing.
After an issue has happened, and if somebody makes a complaint, that's when they'll address it? Is that how it works?
No. So if you call state ethics to get an opinion as to whether you have a conflict, whatever opinion they give you is confidential between you and state ethics.
So you're supposed to do what they tell, you know, if, whether it's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You should.
So how is, how is the general public supposed to know that?
Well, you would hope that if the person gets an opinion from state ethics, that they follow that opinion.
What if they don't?
Then you can call state ethics and file a complaint.
Oh, so then you file a complaint, okay. Well, I'm not saying that we have a conflict of interest here. I'm just a little, about 10 years ago, there were some issues up here that directly affected members of the council. And I just want to clarify it. So if there's no conflict, there's no conflict, but.
It depends on this specific appropriation, the relationship between the counselor and the person who's receiving the benefit. You know, there are several factors that they've taken into consideration.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
You know, I just wanted to clear that up. It's part of this conversation that we're having, and I just want to make sure that, you know, that we get some answers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I was going to answer some of the questions, because I have called the Ethics Committee, and I know on some things, like I walk out when it's anything to do with the budget. With city services, I've always walked out, but I don't have to. I know I don't have to. But I do it anyways. If, the way this was explained to me, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands, if we vote, if you were buying a new truck, and my husband was the only one that was going to use it, and he was going to gain overtime from that, I would not be able to vote for that. But if you were buying a new truck for everybody down city services, I would be able to vote for it, even though I don't do it. It's only if the person that works for the city or works for the schools benefits by what's in front of them. Other than that, they can vote for everything. So it, only if it's, only if it's going to benefit your family member, because he has to work overtime, he's going to use it to work overtime specifically just for him. But if it's a truck that the whole city is using, you can definitely vote on that. Is that correct? Because I've done my homework, and I've done my research. I always leave, because I choose to leave. All right, thank you.
Counselor Paul Titano.
Thank you. And I'll, and I'll be more than happy to share another example as well, because I know we, I've worked with your office in this. Last year, during the $5 million vote for the school department, my sons were laid off. I had to recuse myself, and I filed the disclosure, and I stood in the back and watched the meeting unfold, because my vote would have had a direct influence on my son's position. At the same time, that did not prevent me from voting on the school department's budget, or any other appropriations that came down the road, because it did not directly benefit my sons, because they were not laid off at that time. They were just as any other school employee. And, and also, you know, that was all confirmed through the ethic, state ethics. And, you know, the reason I mentioned this particular situation and willing to share this information is because after our last meeting, I got calls from people who had questions that they were trying to ask me what, what my colleague was implying. Now, again, I don't know what, if there was anything being implied, but I do want to make it clear that I do not do diligence in my situation. I've worked with your office, I filed the proper disclosures, and I do understand the rash, the distinction between what I can vote for, what I can't vote for, because it's all been confirmed through the city solicitor's office and through the state ethics portion, and I filed the proper disclosures. Thank you.
Any more questions for our guest? Counselor Matuski.
I didn't imply anything to this gentleman, and I received calls, too, that a lot of people agree with me. Quite a few people agree with me, that if you have a conflict and you serve on this board, you recuse yourself. It's an appearance of a conflict of interest. They can walk out the room. Can't vote on, it's an appearance. I just want to clear that up. But most people I talk to agree with me.
Okay, Counselor. Any more questions? Nope, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
To place the communication on file?
Second.
And refer back to sponsor.
Mr. President, if I may, take item 17 from the agenda, in the form of a motion.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor? Take 17. Opposed? The ayes have it. City clerk's ready? You can read 17 on the agenda, please.
I'm not ready. One moment, please, sorry. 17. Mr. President, item number 17 is in order offered by, a resolution offered by Counselor Anthony De Perro, respectfully requesting Mayor Di Maria and the CFO Demus appear before the city council to discuss the Commonwealth Gambling Proceed Formula and what the city's options are, options are in regards to the $35 million fine issued to Wind Resorts by the Gaming Commission.
Mr. President, I'd like to invite.
Counselor Perro.
I'd like to invite Mr. O'Donnell before us, and Mr. Demus, if he sees fit.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Just state your name and your position for the record, please.
Kevin O'Donnell, Chief of Staff, Mayor Carl Di Maria.
Eric Demus, CFO.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. I think at least one of, out of the two were in the audience last week when I originally spoke on this, but we have had some conversations over the last week or two regarding it. If you can shed some light, I'd be very appreciative.
Okay. I mean, yeah, the, the funds will be distributed the same manner that all other gaming revenue would be distributed. It's all broken down by percentages. 6.5% will go to Community Mitigation Fund, which is under direct control of the Gaming Commission under Mass General laws. So we can apply for whatever we seek, we are seeking. We know that transportation is a big issue for the administration, so that's likely the route that we would go. And 50% goes to Transportation Infrastructure Fund, which is under legislative control, and then the rest of the percentages go around, you know, according to their formulas, which we don't have it completely broken down to the 100%. But it is 100% controlled by the Mass Gaming Commission, the party that levied the fine.
I'd like to, speaking of mitigation, I know there was some talk a few years ago about trying to find funding sources for the possibility of a pedestrian footbridge to Assembly Row, and just other avenues of moving people without vehicles. If your office can put some pressure on the Gaming Commission for those mitigation needs, and outline the things that we need, and need funding sources for, maybe if we put some heat on them, we can get some more of that money. Because they did agree to pay 35 million today, as we all saw.
Yes.
So that was a recent development. You know.
Yeah, and a regular part of the conversation has been just trying to tie all the pieces together for, for that pedestrian footbridge. Obviously, when the MGM talks came, you know, a lot of people hit the pause button, but it is still very much part of the daily conversation for the connectivity. We just, you know, the funding for the headhouse to receive it is a, is a big piece, but it's still part of the everyday, everyday conversation, and I, I think eventually we will see that going over the water.
And Counselor, to your point, I believe the day the fine was actually announced.
Guys, I can't hear our guests, please. Thank you.
I believe that they, even the very day that the fine was announced, the mayor very publicly stated that he would like to see those funds used for transportation right here in the immediate area.
Yeah, and transportation not being limited to just the footbridge. I mean, to an overall picture of, the mayor is always speaking of connectivity, and that's, that's the biggest piece, which will, if there's connectivity, it is going to lessen the amount of cars on the street, just automatically.
Even if we need to do some work on our own waterways or whatever, they're all means of transportation.
Yes.
You know, and I thank you both for your time. I'll yield if my colleagues have any questions, but I want to thank you both for always being available for a phone call or a meeting every time I reach out during the week. I'm very appreciative for that. Thank you.
Always. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. President, to our invited guest. Can we just get a breakdown to all the colleagues that are here tonight of what percentages are going with throughout the state? You said 6.5% going to community, 15% infrastructure.
Yes. Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Sure, we can pull that out. It comes straight out of the gaming law. If, even if the Gaming Commission wanted to deviate, they, it would actually require a change in statute.
So it would have to go through the State House?
It would.
Okay, yes. If we could just maybe get a breakdown of what the percentages would be that it's going to, and who, who's eligible, what cities and towns? Is it the whole state of Massachusetts that's eligible for that, I would assume?
Each various area, as prescribed by statute, is very specific as to who can use them. So the community impact piece, you know, you have two regions. Basically, you have Springfield, and then you have Everett. Those all go through the Gaming Commission. They have subcommittees on community mitigations. They have various grant opportunities that are done at the beginning of every year. The 15% piece that's going into transportation, that's specifically determined by the legislature itself. So I think if we provide that breakdown for you, you can see how it's applied, both regionally as well as statewide.
I mean, I'd like to know what percentage of that money would be coming towards us, instead of the whole state, how much is coming our way, you know, so.
We couldn't actually determine that. It would have to be based upon the Gaming Commission's awarding any community mitigation. And then in addition to that, with transportation, so the 15% of that fine that would be going to transportation would then be underneath the state and through the legislature, through their annual budgeting process. So it would be some time to make a determination as to how much, you know, of an impact Everett would actually see from a percentage or a dollar standpoint. You're probably talking at least a year's process to determine all of the various possibilities.
And we would have to contact, we could contact them to request, is that how it works, or they just deviate out the way they feel?
The Gaming Commission is very transparent as to how they transmit or distribute proceeds. Again, the bulk of it's done through grant process, very transparent. I believe you can actually grab them on their websites, see, and they do, also do quarterly reporting. So there's constant communication coming out of that State Department.
Thank you.
Counselor, we are keeping a close eye on it, and we're looking to grab every nickel we can.
You're on top of it.
Yeah.
I actually sit on the Subcommittee for Community Mitigation, and trust me, I fight for every single dollar I can get for the city.
Awesome. Thanks.
Keep fighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. We have one more, we have one more speaker. Counselor McGoughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, so I have actually the chart in front of me that I have been reviewing and looking over. So my question to the individuals is, it says that this 25% of this is for Springfield, and 25% of the grows is for Encore Boston Harbor. But it states local aid, for example, 20%. So 20% would be divided into 10% for Springfield, 10% for Encore, for Everett, and then the other 50% is divided up across, so it, so there's all nine categories. There's education fund, transportation, local aid, mass tourism, mass cultural council, racehorse, and there's a whole, and there's a whole divi, set of numbers on each one of these individuals. But at the top corner on the right, it says 25% for Springfield, MGM Springfield, and 25% for Encore Boston Harbor.
And those are the regions, too. It's not specifically for the city of Springfield or the city of Everett.
Okay, so.
It would be the host community as well as surrounding communities that are impacted. So it would be Boston, it would be Somerville, it would be all of, the region as a whole.
So for example, 6.5% for Community Mitigation Fund. That's going to be divided into two regions, and then it gets divided even, broken down even further.
Right.
So what we'll see in the city of Everett's office.
And when you're actually talking about those community mitigation funds, it's actually a granting process where those grants are broken out into ranges. So they wait to see how many grant requests that they've received, and then based upon that, they figure out what they can do with their existing resources. So there's no set finite percentage that we can say that we're going to receive.
Okay. Okay.
It's part of us, it's part of also me sitting on the Subcommittee and making a case for the impact specifically here in Everett. And even though we have executed a community host agreement, that was to address payment in lieu of taxes as well as other costs that the city incurs by having a facility that size. However, the city still should benefit from those Community Mitigation Funds. If anybody, we have the most direct impact on transportation, traffic, and the like. So we make that argument. And then again, based upon whatever available resources that committee has, based upon the percentages prescribed by statute, they'll then base their grant awards.
But there's no percentage that will be higher than what is in this chart, correct? So education fund at 14%. It won't go to 25%, for example. It's going to cap at 14%, and then it gets broken up from-
Not without a change in the state legislature.
Okay, so these are all the categories at the max, but we will never see the max capacity because it has to be broken down into a region and then broken down even further to what we receive in the city.
Sure.
Okay, no, that's great. And it is relatively available. I was able to find it pretty easy. Thank you. I just want to clarify that these are the max capacity for any one of these individual categories, and it's about-
Well, the percentage is prescribed by statute. So when the statute says 15% goes to transportation, 15% of the revenues they collect goes to transportation. It's not a range that they say, okay, one day we'll give up to 15%. It's 15% goes to transportation.
So the education fund at 14%, could we use, could we see some of that for education for local schools?
So that education fund, I believe that's one of the ones that's dictated by the legislature and goes through the annual budgeting process.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Second motion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and I'd like to refer the piece back to sponsor.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Go back to sponsor. Go back to regular business, take item number one.
No, can we take 14 and 15?
14 and 15.
And then we can go back to the regular order of business, please?
Seconded, all in favor? Pulsed, the ayes have it. Please read 14, please.
This is the beginning of unfinished business. Item number 14 is an ordinance offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as President, an ordinance replacing the special license for extended hours of operation with a license to operate during restricted business days and/or hours. This was postponed the last meeting. We referred it, it is a current ordinance on the books. All we did was amend the ordinance. We tweaked it so it was more palatable, easier to read, easier for me to issue licenses. And it also, the main, a very big thing that it did is if there's a property with multiple extended hours, instead of having to get each one to get an individual license, the property can get one license for extended hours, and it's always approved by the city council annually.
And the city solicitor did say that she read this and everything is okay with it. Unfortunately, she had to leave, so she let me know that. Thank you. 14, Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mister President. Anytime, the clerk said that we have to approve it, but even for renewals?
For special hours of operation, yes. It's one of the few-
This would include the casino, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Though I don't know that they need it, but they are requesting to get it. I think-
Well, if they're requesting it, they need it.
Yep, and we're going to issue it. I'm not disagreeing with them, but there's only a few that we actually give out right now.
And this would go to restaurants that may want it?
All of them, but so this is what we did here to make it easier, especially like a large facility like that, they would only get one. So say Encore came in and got it, they would get it for the whole property rather than 50 different businesses coming in, putting a thing on the agenda.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah, that was the major-
I want to, you know, give them all the help they need, you know, there's been some difficulties, as we know, you know, things happen. It's a dream come true. Hopefully, it's not a nightmare. And, you know, I'm looking forward to a positive thing, and I don't want to seem, you know, I just don't think that the council's been treated the way I thought that we would be treated here, you know, with information, and I could go on and on. The small things, but, you know, small things, you know, some members may have been treated a little more with a better reception, but I, you know, I'm going to vote for this, but anytime we grant any special license for any extended hours, I want to know about it to anybody, you know what I mean? But I'll vote in favor of this as long as we are notified of any-
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement. Okay, thank you, Mister Clerk.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, counsel.
This, just so we know, this is for enrollment. This is the beginning process. I still have to, we still have to go for a demand, okay?
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Markey Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor, President Delasola.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, you have enrolled the ordinance. Item number fifteen-
Read 15, please.
Is a petition offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves a new special license for extended hours of operation for Encore Boston Harbor at 1 Broadway.
Favorable action. Second. Roll call vote.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel, President Delasola.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, you have approved the license for Encore Boston Harbor. Maybe revert back to the regular order.
Number one, please.
Item number one is a petition offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves the junk dealer collector license renewal for American Scrap Metal Inc. at 357 Third Street. All papers are in order.
All in favor? I'm sorry, roll call vote, please.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Seven ayes, seven ayes, zero nays, Mister President, you have passed the petition.
Read number two on the agenda, please.
Two is a petition offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves the junk dealer collector license renewal for HH&amp;M Metals Inc. at 337 Second Street. All papers are in order.
Seconded, roll call vote.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, Mister President, you have passed the petition.
Read number four, please, on the agenda.
Item number four is a petition offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves the junk dealer collector license renewal for M&amp;S Metals Inc. at 391 Third Street. All papers are in order.
Seconded, roll call vote.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And again, seven ayes, zero nays, Mister President, you have passed the petition. Item number five is a petition offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves the lodging house license renewal for Fennos at 336 Broadway. All papers are in order.
Second.
Counselor McGlaughlin. And we, do we have any police reports from this facility?
The last one I gave you, the last one I received was in February and March. That was the last one I issued you. I get a new one next month. I get them quarterly.
This is the one that is-
Directly across from the Whittier School.
What do you, correct?
We-
I'd like to refer this-
We had problems in the past there. I went by multiple times in the past. They fixed the fence and issues that they were, that they had. There's definitely been some calls there, mostly medical, if I remember.
There always seems to be parents complaining from the Whittier School about-
Yeah, well, because of people hanging out in front.
Individuals that are there, and again, I heard them as of, this is why I want to make sure it was this location. I've heard of, just as of last week, I heard I was stopped by some parents from the school that had some concerns about some individuals.
You know what, actually, this isn't that one. I'm lying to you. 336 is the big white one next to the gas station a block over Fennos. That's Molly. Mister Molly owns that one in Hancock. This is Fennow. Fennow's the white one, all the way down before you hit the rotary on the same side.
Right next to the gas station.
On the left of, was that Mobile or San Antonio? I can't remember the station, but right, that, right next to it, that big white building. Yeah, that one, same thing. We haven't had, I mean, there's definitely police calls to all of them, but the majority of them are medical. They do have some internal issues on some of them. This one, I can't remember off the top of my head, all of them, but there were definitely a bunch of medical calls the last time I saw it. That was again in March, so April, May, June. We'll be getting another quarter, quarterly report in a few weeks.
I'll say, counsel?
I don't know.
Counselor Matusky.
I just want to be clear, this is the one, the white one.
The white one.
Not the newly painted blue one. No, and actually, they did paint the building a few months back, and it looks 100% better. It was paling and so forth. It's nice to see people take a pride in their property, but the white building is an old funeral home.
Yeah.
I believe it's the old Joneses funeral home. And that is meticulous with landscape, the people that live there are working people, and some of them are ill. As we all know, I mean, I had a medical issue at my house, you know, three months ago with my mother. Things happen in properties that, you know, would show up on these paperworks as a medical call, you know, and I hate to say it, but as the older you get, you realize that you see more and more of it, but these properties serve a purpose. For people who don't have a lot of income, there isn't a lot of housing in the city, you know, and I feel so bad. I just got one gentleman that lived in that building into the Glendale Towers because he was a veteran, he was able to climb the ladder quickly. But this property is, I can vouch for it, they have security there, and I can understand the councilman's concerns, but this particular property is run 100% correctly. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, counsel.
I'll move a favorable action once again.
Seconded. Second, roll call vote.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, you have passed the petition. And item number six-
Six, please.
Is a petition offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola, a petition offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola as President that the Everett City Council hereby approves the lodging house license renewal for 134 Linden Street, lodging at 134 Linden Street. All paperwork is in order.
Favorable action. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to think about-
So if you, if you drive back out of Church Street, what's the street, I'm sorry, Webster Street?
Yeah.
You come back that way or Church Street?
The house is directly right.
If you drive right to the stop sign directly across, it's a brownish house, I believe is the color roughly, it's a darker house, that is a lodging house. It looks like a multi, two or three family, but that's a lodging house.
I never knew there was a lodging house there. Have we ever had issues or I've never got-
Once, once since I've been here, nothing major, but we have, ISD has addressed them. But again, all of them have medical calls. That's the biggest, biggest thing we have.
I know, but we can't look at medical calls.
No, no, I'm, well, I just want you to-
I mean, people can get sick, you know.
Understand, that's the majority of the calls for all of them. Some of them do have other issues, but-
Yeah, but we haven't had any issues of calls, loudness of anything that's out of the ordinary.
Not that I've seen, but I'll issue the next report in a few weeks, and that way you can see them.
Okay.
I email them out every quarter.
Thank you.
Favorable action.
Seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel, and President Delasola.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays, you have passed that petition, Counselors.
Read eight on the agenda, please.
Item number eight, CBD report. Mister President, it's a resolution offered by Counselor Rosa DeFlorio that the planning and community development come to the next meeting to explain what information is given to new residents moving into the city.
Counselor DeFlorio. We've left that in committee. I believe that everybody on the board has received the package.
Yep.
So if anybody has anything they want to add, or they have any questions, please refer it to the Committee of Community and Business Development.
Which will reconvene the first week of September for this specific piece.
Right, so we lay it over until September, but if anybody, like I said, they want to add anything, you have received the package, an idea, it's not the exact, let us know. Thank you. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, not this one. This one says that referred to Tony Seize with a request to provide the entire city council with a sample, not just the committee. So this one's just getting a packet coming back. Then you could, then we said we'd put it back in if, when you got it. So you, yeah, we don't have to-
We, Tony Seize already gave the city council a package.
So, this one's just getting a packet coming back. Then you could, then we said we'd put it back in if, when you got it. So, you, yeah, we don't have to...
We, Tony Cesar already gave the city council a package.
Right.
That was the rough draft. So, he's going to, he's going to put something together and give it to the entire city government.
Yep.
Okay.
Council, I think we're on number, clerk, I think we're on number 12, please.
Yes. Item number 12. It's a CBD report. It's a petition offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves a new Class II motor vehicle dealer license for best auto sales at 3 Everett Ave. This came out of committee favorable, I know Council Matuski spoke on it because it's, I believe this is the one, yep, no, I'm sorry, the committee spoke on it stating that it was a favorable recommendation. It's just a, a new owner, current license is already there.
That's a question, probably, right?
Yeah.
All papers are set?
Are you, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Yes, all papers are in order.
Favorable action.
Second.
Second.
Council de Florio.
Yes.
Council de Piero.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council Matuski.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero, seven ayes, zero nays, Mr. President. And item number...
Read number 19, please.
Item number 19, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Michael J. McGlaughlin that the mayor's chief of staff give a written response as to why residential parking has been taken away on both sides of Union Ave.
Council McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through your clerk, do we have a response from the chief of staff?
Second motion.
Thank you.
No.
This is new business.
I'm sorry. I thought I pronounced weeks ago. I apologize. It's late night and I apologize. Sorry. I am. Refer this to the next meeting and hope for a response back.
Seconded.
Repeat that. I was talking with the other clerk.
Read the next meeting.
Postpone to the next meeting.
From the chief of staff.
All in favor for next meeting?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Nope.
Clerk, you read number, if I'm right, number 20, please.
You are right. Item number 20 is a, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Michael McGlaughlin, Fred Capone and Richard Delasola Jr. that the DBW director provide an update for the maintenance schedule for a community parking lot on Floyd Street at the request of area residents.
Council McGlaughlin, you want to speak or you want to recommend a hold of the next meeting for Council Capone or you want to speak on it now?
Yeah, we can, they make a motion to lay this over for two weeks.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, hold it for two weeks. All opposed, the ayes have it. Clerk, could you read, if I'm correct, again? 24, please.
Item number 24, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Council Michael McGlaughlin, Anthony De Piero and Richard J. Delasola Jr. that the administration consider a day of celebration and recognition for our first responders and their families with a response back at the next meeting.
Council McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. A year ago or so, Council De Piero and I had saw this in Linfield and discussed that this would be a nice idea for our public safety of first responders to give a little bit of thanks for all that they do throughout the year in our community. We see them always on the front line, always being the first ones to respond when there's a call for need. So, we thought that this would be a nice idea, especially with some of the new parks that are up and, up and running this year, that maybe we can do a barbecue and some lawn games or something for the first responders and their families. So, and we talked with you as well, who had saw it in Linfield. So, I'd make a motion to refer this over, lay this over for two weeks and ask if the administration give us their opinion on doing such a day and how we could go about doing so.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Finished me. Clerk, you read number 25.
Mr. President, item number 25 is a resolution offered by Council Michael J. McGlaughlin that a representative from the mayor's office and Department of Transportation appear at the next government operations meeting to discuss the repair of a transformer on Crystal Pathia Way.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, this is, I don't know if anybody, I'm sure everybody actually has seen the new bike lane that was created on Route 16 with the black markers that are up along 16. So, when you come out where the Best Buy is at the bottom of the entrance of the village there, you can't use the crosswalk to get across there because the black poles are there now and that transformer's not working, which controls that light to be able to call for a walk signal to be able to cross there where the Best Buy is between the two bus stops. So, some of the residents in the village had reached out to me and asked me if we could see if we could get that working and that it was the transformer that had gone down about a year ago. But it wasn't such a big deal until they put these black markers up, which created the bike lane, which by the time you get past those bike lanes, you're already halfway into Route 16 and you're kind of trapped at that point. So, at the request of residents to ask that we could get that worked on as soon as possible for, especially with the summer months coming. So, I'm going to make a recommendation that we refer this to Senator Di Domenico and Representative Magonico for a response back in one month.
Second motion.
Under motion, Council Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I thought that was for a vehicle, bus lane or something, you know, an express lane.
That little thing on the right, no, the state...
For bikes?
That's a, it's a bike friendly lane the state put in. It's a state highway.
It's a whole lane. It's not like two feet.
It's the, it's the state roadway. They made that decision.
And the other observation I made in this area is that if you come down Main Street and you, you know, you're just about hitting the rotary and if you take it a right, they've extended that island so that you, you know, you actually have to be in the rotary to take a right now. There used to be two lanes, you know, and now to find out that there's a bike lane there, I mean, maybe it'll work. You know, I know that certain things take time and everything, but I had no idea with that, that, I don't know what you want to call it, that black and white striped thing all the way down. I thought that was like for an express lane for buses and so forth. Now, it's a bike lane. I mean, you know, it's nice to see people driving bikes, but you know, the traffic has to keep going, too. And I was amazed when I saw that island extended. Did you see that? It just got completed recently, you know. It's like, if you're waiting in that line and you want to take a right, you've got to actually get into the rotary now. But it may work, you know. I know that engineers and all this stuff, it's similar to what they did at the Target Mall, you know. It took them a couple of years to figure out that some of the things they did weren't quite right, but now it goes smoothly. But, you know, maybe they'll figure that this might have been a bad idea, that, that whole configuration thing. So, where is this going? This piece?
The senator and the representative.
Because this is a state issue.
Oh, yeah, it's state property.
State property. The city doesn't have jurisdiction.
Oh, is that right? Yeah, we don't have any...
Not on that, not on that property, yeah. That's all state.
Okay. Well, I just, I think the councilman has a good point here that, you know, it's a big mystery to me, but now at least some of it's solved. Thank you.
Council de Piero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, I know it's been a long night. Just want to be on record requesting that when the state does do something like this, they keep us in the loop because I've gotten calls from constituents, you've gotten calls from constituents, we all have. And when we don't know what's going on, we all look like fools. And I think I'd be much better suited as a rapid bus lane right to Wellington Station